upcoming school year will mark my third year in this innovation lab. I have been so thankful to be a part of the lab and would like to share how it has helped me. At the green school, I found my passion, which was art and animation, and I'd be anxious to get home and work on what I actually love. The sin lab has done nothing but encourage me to keep moving forward in my passion while being at school. In these past two years, I created so many projects by using my love for art. Instead of being forced to write an essay for history, Mr. Cole gave us the opportunity to be creative and do what brought us joy. For my project, I did what I want to do for my future career in animation and made an animatic for my final project. I was encouraged to showcase my knowledge and my skills to create something that I'm actually proud of. Another big part about the sin lab that I find so special is the workflow. There have been multiple days where I only focused on math because I was struggling with it at the time. So I spent the whole day talking to Mr. Yuland and Mr. Platts. Instead of being forced to switch subjects, we could address what wasn't making sense to me and work it out. By the end of those days, I could teach what was giving me trouble to other students, just like how other students had helped me out. Sam Carto, Claire Dillon, and I were all a resource for one another. If we didn't understand something, we would ask one another. That's what's amazing about the lab. You're encouraged to collaborate with your classmates, to ask questions, to find solutions, and if you really don't understand something, then you're encouraged to talk to your teachers, who are some of the sweetest people that I've met. I noticed that in past years, there was always a feeling of dread, monotony, a pattern that would set in around the start of the second quarter. I would start to loathe coming into school. Freshman year, I waited for that feeling, yet it never came. Not once did it feel boring or monotonous. Being able to choose to work on what I wanted to gave me a sense of accomplishment, self-reliance, and self-accountability. I felt better about coming to school, which made me feel happier in all aspects of my life. I love being able to move myself forward in my schoolwork while not being at school. It has truly made me feel college-ready. I've talked to multiple modern-day animators in the animation industry. Getting a job is not just based upon ACT scores or what college you attend. It is a one-day interview based on collaboration and skills. Use your skills in an active interview. This sin lab has made me very excited to be there. It makes me excited to learn, to do what I love, to interact with people that I really enjoy being around. This innovation lab has done nothing but be a positive experience and has been a great step forward in the future of schooling. I feel that getting rid of the sin lab would only be a step backwards in a field that direly needs improvement. I've loved my time in the sin lab, and I look forward to being a part of it these next two years and would love to see it still standing even after I've graduated. I know that this is just the perspective of one student, but I want to do all to know how thankful I am and the difference it is making in my life.
Thank you. Thank you, Maxwell. Next up is Melissa Scott.
Mrs. Weiss, if it's okay, I'm gonna let Jordan go first. I think he was on the bucket first.
Sure, absolutely.
Hello, my name is Jordan Scott, and I'm from the class of 2021. Yes, I just graduated. And I got into the College of Engineering at UW Madison. So during my time in the lab, I had many, I made many, many great connections, learned priceless skills, and received valuable opportunities that helped me build and strengthen what will eventually become my college application and will always be the skills that I use in my day-to-day studies in college and in the job I will have in the future. A great example of the opportunities that I've had, thanks to the lab, is the Kroger Technology Internship that I participated in during my senior year. The internship lasted the entire first semester, and as a result of the internship, was a product that me and three other members, one member from each grade of high school, all from this innovation lab, one member from each grade of high school, sorry, called the Launchpad. Long story short, the Launchpad made it to the CIO's desk, and about a month, about a month later after the semester ended, it made it into 300 stores. That was about last year. I think it's safe to say that it was a huge success thanks to the innovation lab. Next, let me be straight. My freshman year was not good. As you know, or might not know, but I was both in the traditional classroom for high school and in the, and in this innovation lab. This innovation lab started during my sophomore year, but my freshman year did not go well due to me getting sick multiple times, and then I could not make up the piled-up work I had, well piled up while I was in the hospital, and then I just cannot adjust to the difficulty increase that actually happened between junior high, high school. As you can imagine, this does not do wonders from our GPA. Moving on to sophomore year is when I applied to this innovation lab, and I decided to take a chance, and well, I got in. So this innovation labs project-based learning was a very, very new concept that none of my peers and I knew how to, knew how it worked. At first, nobody knew how to do anything or how we were supposed to do it, or when we were supposed to do it, or who we were supposed to ask. However, over time, we eventually got into a rhythm and a rhyme that let us, well, do our work, and that's collaborating with the teachers. That's the best part about this innovation lab. It was extremely different from what we're all so used to, the traditional classroom. It has recovered significantly, and I have adapted in a completely new learning style that, from what I had up until freshman year. I mentioned earlier that I got into accepted, accepted into the University of Wisconsin-Madison, sorry, College of Engineering. Recently, I just finished an ECE summer launch program that lasted the entirety of July. During my time there, I realized just how similarly things between innovation lab and the college course were taught. Whenever I asked a question to the professor, they would, they would have a discussion with me like they would in this innovation lab, like I would with Mr. Cole in law studies and social studies seminar, and Mr. Arnold in a science seminar. And that was like, it was kind of baffling just how well the innovation lab prepared me for that. Again, that's why those classes I just listed are my three favorite classes.
So as you know, I stand before you, Melissa Scott. Oh, do you need our address? Let me think about that. 9548 East Timber Road. I don't think you need that. I stand before you now as a proud mom of a young man that you just heard speak. My hope is to provide some additional context to his comments and implore the board to think carefully as it considers the future of the innovation lab. Knowing time is limited, here's three things that you need to know about Jordan. He, one, he faces numerous health challenges that have had a profound impact on his education. Two, he's a bright kid, but struggles a little bit with executive functioning skills. Three, he's a non-traditional learner and a horrible test taker. If you know the structure of this innovation lab, you can see why it was an attractive option to us when it was first offered his sophomore year. We had already had experience in the traditional high school classroom freshman year, and it just wasn't for him. I could talk to you ad nauseam about all of the reasons why innovation lab was the right fit for us, but here are some of the most important. First, consistency.
I can't see nothing on the screen though.
They learned how he processes information and collaborated with him to be a successful lifelong learner. They developed strong relationships that helped him in more ways than I'll ever be able to name. I'll come back to that last one here in a minute. Opportunity. Jordan mentioned he participated in the Kroger Tech internship. Not only was it a fantastic opportunity for him to learn, but it allowed him to strengthen skills that he otherwise would not have. My child had an entire IEP dedicated to executive. The project manager and helped lead his team to the development of technology that will eventually be implemented in numerous stores. But even more importantly, he got the opportunity to network within the industry he dreams to work for. Growth. Through the lab, Jordan grew from a kid that struggled in the traditional classroom to a young man in his senior year, reading college-level textbooks on constitutional law and having lively debates with Greg Cole on various topics. The lab moved him from simply memorizing facts to synthesizing information for application to the real world. Think about the opportunity to discuss the implications of the First Amendment last year with the backdrop of George Floyd and the Black Lives Matter protests. Remember I mentioned his relationships? I have no doubt that Jordan felt comfortable having these types of conversations because of the years of trust that had been established. In short, he found himself. He found his voice in the lab. So who is he today? As he casually mentioned, he's headed to UW Madison to study computer science engineering. However, I want to note this highly competitive program only accepted 17% of applicants. I know for a fact that his presence in the lab and the unique style of learning is one of the things that made him stand out as an applicant. Additionally, his mentor from Kroger Tech wrote a glowing letter of recommendation. Having the product that they develop and support from industry also made him a unique applicant. Because I can guarantee you, it wasn't his test scores. Remember? Bright kid, terrible test taker. Okay, so we got in, and that doesn't mean any, he's necessarily going to be successful, right? That summer launch program that he mentioned, that was actually a four-week accelerated 200-level engineering course, and he aced it. He is this innovation lab success story.
Your time's up. I'm sorry. Mr. Lewis would like to say a word.
I just wanted to say, Jordan and Maxwell, thank you so much for coming and sharing your experiences and, you know, it's, I wish we heard from students more often at our board meetings and, you know, we love hearing from our students, especially Jordan, recent graduates. Congratulations and best of luck to you with your future endeavors, but, you know, Maxwell, again, stay connected to us, stay sharing this information with us, because, you know, that's how we learn and grow, is being able to hear from our students that are experiencing the high school. So fantastic job tonight, being vulnerable and being courageous to share your experiences. So thank you.
Okay, next up is Jennifer Bain.
Hello, good evening. I'm Jennifer Bain. I live in Palmetto's. And I'm here to address the board regarding the benefits and I believe the need for this innovation lab. To keep this short and to my own experience, I want to discuss the significance this sin lab has had on my child. My child is not a typical learner and therefore has major struggles in the past in the traditional classroom, especially with executive functioning, which led to struggles with self-esteem. And each green hand in the junior high, basically Mrs. Evans, Mrs. Asher, and Mr. Brenner, shout out to them, amazing educators, were my child's executive functioning for him. When he got to this innovation lab, the educator said, "We won't accept this. We have complete confidence in him." And they worked with us as his parents to, throughout that year, acknowledge the development that he needed and made him take ownership for this himself and for his own education and for a 14-year-old boy with ADHD, dyslexia, and executive functioning issues. This was a huge, huge, you know, stress, but also it now became a sense of pride. He has, over the two years, and even last year, he was virtual due to COVID because he also has health problems, but he developed these skills and was on track himself without. Educators except to suck in and do the normal amount of work. He actually finished the year out with his work on time, which was a huge accomplishment. And this sets him up to understand his own pace and what it means when he goes to college and when nobody is there to say, "Hey, you're assigned to tomorrow. Where is this assignment? Why haven't you done this yet?" The other thing this innovation lab does is they, oh, is the educator there? Everything. He just got his first job, and he's working tonight, so that's why he's not here. He wants to study abroad for a semester. These are all accomplishments that I think are accredited to this innovation lab support. And the two, and also of which I want to say about this innovation lab, it is innovation education. It is something we need in this country. The workforce has changed, and I'm finishing right now, one sentence left. And this innovation lab has put our school district on the map nationally.
Jennifer, your time is up.
So thank you so much. We want to keep it on the nationally recognized.
All right, our next participant is participating virtually. Maya Chamberlain, are you available?
Yes, I am. Hello.
There she is.
All right. I'm Maya Chamberlain, and I live on.
Hold on a second. We can't, hold on one minute. Okay, try again, Maya.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yep, okay, go ahead.
My name is Maya Chamberlain, and I live on Schoolhouse. And I'm here to tell you about what I have gotten out of this innovation lab experience. The first, one of the first major things that I have gotten out of the sin lab is being able to speak publicly much more comfortably. This innovation lab provides much more constructive and personal feedback for speeches. At the beginning of my freshman year, I had to write a speech to introduce myself, and I struggled with presenting it. Now I'm able to speak in front of all of you. Secondly, I know a lot more about myself. Freshman year, I had a very hard time assessing myself and how I learn, and now I know that I like to plan my workout and focus on logic and making decisions. This innovation lab has also provided me with many opportunities to succeed. I consider touring the Kroger headquarters and helping them with ordering more products more accurately, one of my biggest accomplishments. If this innovation lab was terminated, I would miss most of the personalized learning that this innovation lab has to offer. The teacher team has meetings about each and every student, as well as student-led parent-teacher conferences. I would miss out on one-on-one conferences at almost any given time during school, and I would miss personal and unique relationships with my teachers that foster academic growth towards my career goals. I would also miss the community that we have formed. Thank you for listening, and I hope you learned a little bit more about the different opportunities that this innovation lab has to offer.
Thank you, Maya.
And Maya, just like Jordan and Maxwell, we're so appreciative of hearing from another student and sharing your experiences. So thank you again for just taking the time out of your day to share with us about your experiences in the sin lab.
Okay, we, because Maya did not take up her full three minutes, Mr. Chris Taylor, would you like to come up and speak?
Thank you. This was a surprise because I didn't think I was going to be doing it today. So thank you for this time. I just want to take a moment. I'm Maxwell Taylor's father. And my wife, JJ, and I, we were, we were present for the last meeting, but it was in our car, and it was yesterday, and we were driving around town visiting family and stopped at Chick-fil-A. And we were listening to it online, and we were gathering the information that was being presented. The thing that I appreciate it is that you all were talking about data. And data, when it is gathered correctly, when it's gathered effectively, and then when it is massaged in such a way that is giving us the information that it is desiring to give, it can be wondrous. And the thing that I really appreciate is that you all were talking about being accountable to the data, and I just want to encourage you, keep pushing that, keep going there. The thing that I would like to add, though, onto that is that what we end up seeing, the data academically doesn't, as we all know, tell the full story. And there are things that are out there like Boyatzis and Dr. Goldman around motion and social competencies. And that is a measurable thing, and we end up seeing within industry that those are key indicators within future success, not just professionally, but also personally. It's being able to manage the relationships that you have within your life, being able to manage the emotions that you have, and being able to help manage the emotions that are coming at you from someone else. We also see through Dr. Duckworth, Angela Duckworth, within her work with grit, is that grit is a key thing, and it is a measurable thing to be able to determine what the future can look like for this individual. I bring these up because I end up seeing those things as I watch my son Maxwell, and I end up hearing the stories about him and his friends, that these things are being developed. And I'm wondering if there may be able to be other measurements that maybe haven't been considered. And if I was at Chick-fil-A and I was ordering and I missed that that part was mentioned last time, I apologize to you because I take my Chick-fil-A really seriously. The last thing I would like to say is that I've been able to be around some wonderful leadership thought leaders and culture thought leaders here locally, and they have shared what they end up considering being key things for individuals when it comes to them being effective employees. And it really goes to two things for leaders to end up looking at. And it's being able to help these individuals develop their critical thinking skills as well as their ability to end up developing their ability to think through not just shallow questions, but the deep questions. So their critical thinking skills that end up being at play, I end up seeing with Maxwell that he gets to partake in something that was illegal when we were growing up. When you collaborated, it was cheating. And I thank you that you allow my son to be a part of something that now is not illegal anymore. Collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Are there any more non-agenda public participation requests forms? Is it, is it about a non-agenda item? What is it about? Okay, so we've already, we've actually maxed out for similar 15 minutes. Can you come back to the morning meeting in September? Okay, great. Okay, on to the presentation of the Sycamore Advisory Commission, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kamafer to introduce the group.
Thank you. As you know, we have the Sycamore Advisory Commission that is studies specific topics that the superintendent and the school board asked for to be studied for the year, and we had wonderful, we had four excellent presentations this year. We have asked the specific group that led the topic of multi-tiered compensation strategies to come and share their topic in front of the board. So I want to thank the team, all of the teams that did the work, but specifically thank the team that's here tonight to get the presentation and field the Q and A directly from the board. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Aaron. I'm an at-large member of the Sycamore Advisory Commission. Beside me are two of my cohorts, Julie Simpson on my left, a teacher at Montgomery Elementary, and another at-large, at-large member, Michelle Ellis. Three of us have about a dozen slides here that we'll kind of walk you through, share with you the research and the findings that we came up with, give you a feel for what SAC does and what the next steps might be for the board. All right, so let's see if we can make this work. Delayed reaction.
Good talking.
Okay, here we go. So this presentation was brought before the commission in April. We've updated it, refreshed it now. There were a number of people involved in this presentation. Not all could be here tonight. Our administrative support came from Mr. Forstofel and from Beth. The charge that we were given was, help us understand the realities behind multi-tiered compensation in a public environment. And by multi-tiered, what we mean is, is it practical or possible or a good idea or not to consider compensation methods other than base pay and perhaps an annual bonus? That would include pay for performance. It couldn't, you know, involve a number of other different dimensions to, you know, bringing more robustness into the compensation environment. The specific questions around that are, what are those likely tiers? What does the research say? What did the district say? Are there private models or private sector models that play into this that would help? Boy, my eyesight is not quite that good. What, what models might apply here at Sycamore? Yeah, let's do this. And then lastly, how are these models funded? How are they implemented? What do you have to do to make it real? How are they communicated? How are they executed? There's a lot of questions that come behind making a kind of a major step move in a program like this. So what we did with that charge was embarked on a research adventure, hit the books, so to speak, and looked at all the research that was available, third party, to help us understand the waterfront. What have other people been doing? How long has it been going on? How well has it worked? Where has it not worked? And what would be a good amalgamation of that that says, here's what we need, Sycamore need to know to consider whether we want to move forward with something like this, or whether we want to use more caution. So it boiled down to, we picked, I think, six or eight. Come on. There we go. To these particular research examples to kind of provide an exemplar for what's it like out there? What has the rest of the world done with this? Austin Independent Schools was a program done about 10, 15 years ago. Vanguard Sentinel Schools here in Ohio. OSBA has a lot to say about this. Patel for Kids has a lot to say about this. We do have some private sector experiences to share. There's a major effort going on in Denver right now. Oakwood City Schools up in Dayton, and then, you know, there were many others researched, but these, I think, represented kind of a waterfront of examples that were very, spoke very strongly to us. All right, so we have one slide for each of these, and we'll just quickly wander through each one of them to give you a feel for it. The Austin Independent Schools was interesting to us because they, they engaged the Vanderbilt National Center for Performance Incentives. Believe it or not, there is such a group there. Very research-oriented, very, very bright people came in and worked collaboratively with Austin for a number of years to do research on what are the necessary parts here to make this productive? What do we have to do to make it productive? What do we have to do to get it in play, and how will it play out? They rolled the program out for a number of years. It was some tremendous market research done there, but after a number of years, the program just kind of fell into some disarray. There were benefits, but they were sporadic. There were some instances where there weren't benefits, and at the end of the day, I think the energy for the program just kind of, you know, fittered out a little bit. The takeaway, I think, for Sycamore is, you know, just engaging in high-level consulting in and of itself may not be enough to actually drive the entire program. There's more that's needed. So the next two, I'll turn over to Julie for and see if you can use a clicker better than I can.
Thank you. All right, good evening. I'm going to talk to you about Vanguard Sentinel Career and Technology Centers. These are located in Fremont and Tiffin, Ohio, and they're joint vocational schools, kind of like our Great Oaks here in Cincinnati. Their motto allows for administration and teachers to receive the same base increase. This is determined by their collective bargaining agreement, and it does promote a sense of togetherness. In addition to the base increase, administrative, administrative staff may earn an additional increase in salary based upon the number of performance points earned. So for every 25 points earned by the staff member, that could result in a quarter percent increase in addition to their salary. So it could be a 2% base and a 2% performance. The points may be earned via student performance, professional development, or work ethic. And a detailed example of how they do all of this with the point systems is located in the appendix of this, if you want to look a little more. The takeaway for this one is that it is a scaled-back targeted approach that can yield success. So it says here that 70% participation, so 70% of the staff earn full performance benefits annually. This plan was created by a committee over a three-year period. It has been in use for the past eight years, and the money is budgeted every year for everyone to get everything. Mr. Greg Edinger said multiple times in the conversation with him that we celebrate success together. Next, we'll talk about Oakwood City Schools. Whoops, that's right. I talked with Dr. Kyle Ramey, who's the superintendent there. They use something similar to Vanguard with the point system. There's this called the Compass Plan, and the compass is an acronym that stands for compensate performance that affects student success. So they're looking at three different topics, and that's performance evaluation, which is up to 2% on the base salary. They look at district and department goals, which is an opportunity to earn up to 100 or 1% of the base salary. And then they're looking at the professional growth goals, which is a fixed annual incentive that is up to $750 per year. The takeaway from this is that it's very widely well-regarded. It's district transparency that everybody can see, the community can see what's going on, and they're looking at just keeping it simple, and it's a success example. Dr. Ramey said many times that everybody can get everything. Next, we'll talk about Ohio School Boards Association.
So we spoke to a couple of people at the Ohio School Board Association, and they gave us probably more cautionary feedback than anything else. They said it's really challenging to effectively fund and implement a performance-based program for administration. Evaluation requires really looking at what's currently expected of each role as well as what more could be rewarded. So not just having, you know, this is your role, but how can you exceed that role to earn your reward or benefits? Having a specific job description and role expectations is really important. And they also felt that it's with some of the roles of administrative or non-teaching staff, it can be really difficult to have those job descriptions, that a lot of districts don't have that. And to put them in place is a whole nother step that's needed. A clear understanding of who's responsible for the evaluations is needed, and a way to quantify performance. Additional budget is required, and it needs to be more motivating than just the standard 2% to 3% a year that they regularly will make for cost of living. An additional challenge is the reward being tied to student achievement. This can create a lot of friction if the principal is bonus based on what's perceived as teacher accomplishment. So a good takeaway is just, or the takeaway is just good cautionary advice based on broad experience. And the funding also needs to be secure because if, as Julie mentioned in one of hers, if it's not funded for everyone to get every amount, then year after year, you're trying to figure out how it's going to be funded. And then you lose the incentive for them to work for it if it may or may not get funded for them. And they also said that some roles lend themselves better to this type of compensation than others. So it can't just necessarily be blanket across everyone who's non-teacher in the district because some roles, you know, there's only so much you can do, and there's not really anything above and beyond you can do. You're either doing your job or you're not. So then we talked to, we got a white paper from Patel for Kids, and they, let's see. Now it's going to go too far. Okay. I'm really only hitting it once. There we go. Okay. So Patel for Kids did a white paper, and it was about 10 years ago. So they dusted it off for us. But in that white paper, it had 10 different steps that they said that they found critically important if you're going to move forward with this type of compensation plan. One is just determining the correct strategy and objectives is key. Like, you have to have that very clear. And they said the failure of a lot of programs has been that the strategy and objectives weren't necessarily set appropriately to start with. Then the strategy, strategy compensation is not the fix-all solution. It's one layer of a plan. So you can't just assume that having some sort of compensation plan will, like bonus compensation plan, will all of a sudden make everybody want to achieve their bonuses. There's no one best model. Every district is unique. So every district needs to create their own model that will work for them. A plan imposed is a plan opposed. So there haven't, this hasn't been done a lot with administration. It's been done more with teachers. A lot of our examples were with different teaching staff. And if it's just said, this is what it's going to be, and this is the plan, and this is how you're going to get bonus, and it's not input from every, all of the different key parties, then people fight it. Obtain, and that leads to the next point, which is obtain input from all parties, teachers, administrators, parents, and taxpayers. You really need to get all of their perspectives and all of their buy-in to be able to get the funding for it. Think sustainably, funding year over year. Use multiple measures for success, not just test scores. They really say that the most successful programs looked at a 360 circle of success and didn't just focus solely on the test scores because that then just, it didn't end up leading to them getting excited about the bonuses because sometimes with administrators, that's often not necessarily, they don't have a lot of control over that. Teaching in the class plays a lot of role. The curriculum plays a lot of role. And so, and then again, you get to the teachers who, if they are feeling their administration is getting bonus off of what they're doing in the classroom, getting the test scores up, it creates the friction there. Learn from the past. So again, this was going back to test scores universally. If test scores are what it's based on, success is based on, those programs have universally failed that they've seen. Be fair and transparent and consistent and open in communications. So more experimental constructive advice. This is just more experimental constructive advice beyond what the OSBA gave. And each item above requires thought, ongoing commitment, and resources. And it's a really short read. We, again, attached it in the appendix. So the points are all laid out pretty succinctly there.
Awesome. Great. Next up is what did we find in the private sector? I want to say for the last two, we use the word cautionary. I don't want that to sound like a negative connotation. It's not at all. I think we're just making the point that it's a big deal. Making a move like this is a lot of change within the infrastructure of the organization, and there are hurdles to overcome. But we're excited about some of the opportunities as those hurdles get overcome. One of them is hitting the right clicker at the right time. There it goes. Okay. Oh, goodness. Okay. Thank you. So the private sector has been at this a lot longer. You know, you know, incentive-based pay has been a part of the private sector for a long time. Pay increases for merit-based performance are becoming more and more a factor within the private sector, is becoming more broadly spread and becoming more individual. The programs are becoming more universal across many disciplines. But the incentive ratio is very widely. Some positions are very highly incented, more than 50% of compensation. It would be much less based on the, on the particular position. But typically, these are based on the ability to deliver or hopefully over-deliver against set expected quantifiable outcomes. These programs are characterized by deep reliance on the HR organization, a compensation organization, and existence of extensive IT tools and support as well as a governance team to help kind of bring the program to maturity, if you will. The takeaway here is that, you know, the concept of incentive pay is just as valid in the public sector as it is in the private sector. The private sector is way ahead in terms of having built models and mature models that have been in place for a long time, know a lot of the hurdles and a lot of the challenges that are part of it. But the private sector can be a huge helper and partner and accelerator for school districts who want to move in this direction. Okay, then the next slide. No? Yes? Okay. Hopefully, I didn't go two. No, that's one. Okay. This is a case that is still in action in the city of Denver. The public schools have a program called Pro Comp. It's been around for quite a while. I want to say 2005, if I remember correctly. It is based on performance evaluation, structure, and incentives. There was substantial support provided by a very large employer in the Denver area that lended their expertise and some of their tools to help get it off the ground. It was provided for both teachers and administrators. There was a $25 million levy that was approved back then, which had other, you know, funding factors in it. But that was a big part of what provided the initial funding, as you heard from the others, knowing that that funding is there in case the awards are achieved, that the funding would be there, and there wouldn't be disappointment about having achieved and then not getting rewarded. The administrative, you know, our chart, our charter back to the beginning is, what about doing this for administrators? So we'll speak to that directly. The administrator participation level and overall satisfaction has been very good with this program for a long time. And it's still going on, and it's still being, it's still very well-regarded. But every year is a new year. Every year is a new political environment. Every year is a new market environment. Every year is a new regulatory environment. And in their current mode, they're being challenged by adjacent markets, which are making catch-up moves with them. And they're being challenged by the union, who would like to see that incentive pay get dropped down into base pay. So they're, they're having kind of a tug-of-war right now locally about what that's going to look like in the next year. This pay-for-performance program was limited to the typical merit budget, which is 2% or so. You heard us say earlier that the more incentive budget that's provided, the higher that budget can be, the more the incentive program has a chance to be, to be enjoyed. Okay, the takeaway here. This is an impressive success story over a long period of time, but it still shows that there are risks. The private sector participation has been key on several fronts. The programs are dynamic. They need substantial change in TLC every year because they are subject to new and varied threats every year. Okay, the pros and cons. That would be Julie, right?
All right, so based on the research that our team gathered, we tried to just look at what are the pros and cons from, from all sides. The pros would include enabling administrators to earn for their overachievement, and it could extend into the certified and classified if they choose to do so. It can bring new energy to school employment. There is potential to achieve better outcomes for students, schools, and district. It may justify enlarged compensation budget pools, and it can help retain current administrator base and attract more or better future candidates.
Some of the cons were that it may require new HR infrastructure, both with policies, support tools, training, and how the annual reviews are done, and just general oversight. Defining and redefining performance metrics can be a loser. Okay. And extensive upfront and ongoing communications are crucial. Program funding must be firm and not conditional. Constituents may choose not to support for any number of reasons we heard, whether it be union, dissatisfied employees, communities, or adjacent districts. And then there's a need to acknowledge program costs in the event that the program fails to flourish.
The takeaways rolled up? All right, there it is. So we had a takeaway for each one of the slides. We kind of roll them up and generalize them here for emphasis. There are examples of success. There are examples of not so much success. There's certainly great opportunity here, but we need to be fully aware as a community, as a Sycamore community, how we would deal with, what is the readiness of our HR infrastructure today? If we're going to do this in a large way, we would need more support, more resources underneath to allow ongoing support of the program. Number two, the ability to fund the program with certainty over time. I think that was one of the big winners on the Denver program was they knew that the money, the teachers knew that the money would be there if they did their job. There were other programs not shown here that the performance was achieved, and the funding couldn't be provided. They had to prorate it out, and, you know, things went south from there. The expected economic and qualitative benefits of the incentives, the program needs to be very specific, all the way around. He's very transparent. It needs to be ready to change at any time. But the expected benefits of those incentives need to be well-known up front. The readiness of the Sycamore School's full ecosystem. This isn't just about teachers. It's not just about administrators. It's not just about the board. It's not just about SAC. It's everybody. It's a regulatory issue. It's a community issue. It's, you know, everybody has to be, all hands on deck for this, or there's going to be factions that are going to make it very hard to get off the ground. So communication and getting the word out there is a very big part of what makes successful programs successful. To make a full evaluation of the opportunity for our district, Sycamore needs to determine kind of an upside, a value add for the level of effort that's desirable to get a program like this in place. There are a number of ways to get the program going. There can be kind of a step in, you know, at a time, kind of like what Oakwood did. It can be a very broad-based program like Denver did, and almost anything in between. So the investment level and the risk level can be very incremental and very slight, or it can be very broad-based and very long-term. We have one more slide, and this is just a few other additional considerations, and then we'll roll it up.
There's a spectrum of possible solutions to entertain. A phased-in approach would work to reduce risk and accelerate initial deployment. A partner approach also seems attractive. And there is a spectrum of bonus structures to consider. We have not seen a case where admin first was the approach. It usually started with the teachers, to engage them early and often to avoid unintended discord. Sustained commitment from leadership is critical. Periodic resistance and other local dynamics can quickly derail plans. Consistent renewal creation is needed annually. And then the other thing that we found is that the bonus structures may take different forms. It doesn't necessarily need to be cash. There can be other ways to reward. So thinking about what might make the most sense in our district for our administrators.
Maybe that's the last slide, right?
Yep, then we have the appendix, which has links to every, every plan that we looked at and all of the reports and white papers that we looked at.
I was going to say, thank you so much for sharing your research. And I think it's a great example for the community of the purpose of the Sycamore Advisory Commission to take a topic and do the research. And the, the members are both district employees and business leaders in the community who have dedicated their time. And I just wanted to thank all three of you for the research on this, this topic. Very much appreciated.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity.
Before you go, I just want to make sure the board has a chance to have Q and A as well.
Thought we cut out of here.
Not so fast.
I have a question. It's a lot of good information. Do you have, did you get a sense from any of the people that you spoke with how long it took to actually plan their, their programs?
So Oakwood took three years to put into place, and that was community members, teachers, everybody on board, three years to compile a plan that was ready to work. And that's the one that's been in place for eight years.
And I think that's pretty typical, at least two years.
Did you, did you see any information? Or did you ask information about the performances? You know, what perform, what, what in the district the performance increased in? Like, what did this impact as far as if it was academic scores, performance scores? You know, what did this really impact overall in the district?
It varied greatly from place to place. In, for instance, in Austin, a lot of it had to do with, there were several schools that were middle or upper class. There were a lot of schools that were middle and lower class, and they really wanted to go where the opportunity was strongest and pull it up from there. So the incentives were stronger there, and there was more likelihood of getting a result in that area. So that's kind of how Austin played it out. Denver was not that way at all. It was really for everybody. But they, and they stayed within that 2% to 3% range in Austin. They had a much higher range of potential bonuses. So maybe part of your question is also one of the metrics. What measures did they have in place? You know? That also varied a lot. Test scores were almost always a factor. It's kind of an age-old factor. So sometimes it gets used heavily, sometimes not so heavily. There's a lot of time that needs to be spent thinking about the rest of the metrics. Some of them can be very objective, but they need to be spelled out, and they need to be collaborated upon and socialized. And they need to become part of the performance evaluation process. So usually, there's a process at the beginning of the school year that, you know, between the administrator and the teacher, this is what I think can happen here. Do you agree? Can we move on a program that looks like this? And it's relatively objective at the end of the semester. Those things can be seen as clearly having happened or not happened. There are also qualitative items. There are also qualitative items in to say, what did you do to help the schools that you can articulate and make that part of it as well? Does that address the question?
Yeah, I have a question too, with Oakwood and Vanguard, how long have they been in place?
So Vanguard is the one that has been in place for eight years.
Eight years.
Yes, and Oakwood, it's currently in place, I don't know how long it's been in place.
Okay.
But it literally has point systems, it's like the rubric that you look to see what points you've achieved and you can see exactly where you fall.
So especially with Oakwood, because that's a high performing district like us, that's a very good comparable. Do you have a sense of how well that is received amongst their, and then it's just their administrators, correct?
No, it's administrated, certified and classified that are using this compass program.
They're really proud of that program and they should be, they have great support.
But each of those groups show support for this system?
And each gets compensated.
Yeah.
As part of this system.
Okay, so on your research, just looking at the pros and cons, I looked at the the two sheets there, what's your take? You know, what's your recommendation? You think Sycamore is a place that could pursue, take next steps on this?
We had a lot of discussions on this and we kind of feel like it's it's hard to say. That I think it can be successful, but I think more work needs to be done to determine if Sycamore can do the work needed as well as will it achieve something more than we have today? And that was kind of out of the scope of what we were doing here because we're doing so much digging just to find examples and and places to look further. So I think that kind, we kind of all agreed that that's a next step. Not necessarily for the advisory council, but maybe even a group of teachers, administrator, board, community, some sort of group put together if exploratory group, if it's something we want to move forward with.
Maybe make a trip to Oakwood, see what they're doing. Thank you very much for the presentation.
See, this is an opportunity to maximize the investment in the teachers and in the schools. You know, it will probably have a cost, a net incremental cost somewhere along the way, which begs the question, what comes back into the schools? The money goes out, what comes back? And we have not gone to that extent that says, okay, here are some incremental benefits that we'd like to see accrue to the to the district because we invested in the program. Can we do better? We always can, would incentives help? I think it would, I come from the private sector, I lived under a model like that for the last 20 years and I know that incentives drive behavior. So I think there's absolutely opportunity there, there's also a lot of work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, so much, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle, Mike and Julie, very much appreciated.
All right, moving on to our superintendent's agenda, Mr. Lewis, Healthy Aves update.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. You know, first day of school is now 12 days away. Extremely excited, staff are starting to trickle into the buildings. Unfortunately, except for our Sims Elementary friends, you know, they're under major construction and it's going to be down to crunch time before they can enter into the building. So we're keeping them in our thoughts because they're going to get limited time to get their classrooms ready for students. So we're going to be out there assisting them through that process. So this week, a lot of exciting things going on, new hire orientation was this week. Again, when you walk into a room full of new staff members to the district, they're so excited to be here. Got to hear a lot of positive comments about just the process and things that are happening as people walk into our district. So, you know, our goal, we want to keep that positive momentum from some of those things that are happening within our district. So, you know, extremely excited to make this school year the best school year that we we can possibly make it. We've had months and months of challenges and, you know, we've navigated it well and, you know, responded and reacted well and and our goal continues to be keeping kids in the classroom and making sure that we can educate our students. So we appreciate the patience of all of our families. The staff has been amazing, you know, being patient with us and helping us get through this. You know, most importantly, appreciate the words of encouragement, you know, people reaching out saying, you know, really appreciate the work that you've done the last 18 months. And, you know, responding to the a really difficult situation for all of us. Yeah, I think it's important that we all continue to give each other space and grace. Our goal is to get back focused on teaching and learning. And, you know, that's, that's one of the things that's most concerning is we're not spending time helping our district get better and be ready with teaching and learning and improving our skills. We're we're focused on a lot of other extraneous things that have to be obviously discussed. But, you know, we want to get back to our core mission and I continue to make that a priority. Yeah, as we look to the new year, I think it's important, a couple of things are very clear. And, you know, I want everyone in this room and and people at home to hear this. You know, every decision that we make is going to be focused on two goals. Health and safety of our students and minimizing this disruption to our students' education. I think it's critically important, you know, for us, this is not a political situation, this is not about politics. It's not about what the media is saying, it's not about social media. It's not about the articles and opinions that are floating around on social media on both sides of the issue. For me, it's minimizing the disruption, this is now the third school year that has been threatened by COVID-19. And, you know, that's so critically important as we look at our students and making sure that we fill those gaps and make sure that their academics are being addressed appropriately. Secondly, all decisions are based on trusted data sources and and we're going to, again, display those for the community here in a moment to accomplish those two goals. It's the same trusted medical data that we've been basing all of our decisions on over the last 18 months. And I can't say that enough, that's, we have not changed our process or our model. Number three, the education this community demands in this COVID world with respect and support of our teachers, staff, families and students. You know, it's our job to make sure that we provide that high level education to our students in this difficult time. You know, in my mind, it's time for us to rally together as a community and really support our students in getting back to school. I admire the resilience of our community and our students over the last 18 months. They they've lived through and, you know, if you think about, you know, a student that's been in kindergarten, they've never experienced school, not in a COVID world. So I think that's that's critically important that we we recognize the resilience of our students. Next slide, please, Mr. Fritz. Our Healthy Aves guide is now available online. I'm not going to spend a ton of time going over that, I think, you know, people can go on and read the Healthy Aves guide and and get those updates. We've shared those with the board and the community a number of times, some of the content that is in that guide. Certainly, we encourage staff and families to get on and review that information. Again, that's now available and, you know, obviously tonight, we're going to discuss our facial covering policy and then an update to our quarantine guidelines that I think will help our community a little more understand how the quarantine guidelines have shifted a little bit. Next slide, please. So our data informed decision making, I I would like to, you know, publicly thank the board for passing the resolution on August 4th. Giving me the authority to make data informed decisions about facial coverings and shifting our learning models. This is not any different than last year. The superintendent had the authority to make decisions about a shift in the learning model. And, you know, I just would say, you know, to the community and to the board, it's so critically important. I don't have time to gather you for a meeting when a decision needs to be made, you know, meeting twice a month. You know, it'd be, it would be just like if I needed to close school because of inclement weather, I can't call you together to close school. You know, I need to be able to make decisions and changes on the fly as we see fit based on the data that we have in front of us. We continue to monitor our data weekly. It's certainly critically important to keep looking at that data. And and again, by building, by grade level, by district, we make decisions that could be impacted by that data. Or it could be a district wide decision. If change is necessary, we will certainly continue to update the community every Friday. But I think it's critically important, as you see on the slide, you know, in order to make a shift either based on a positive trend and potentially a negative trend, we need to look at a complete data set. So if we were in a a position where we were requiring facial coverings for those to be removed, we would need to look at two weeks of positive data trends. So I think that's important for our community because that seems to be a question that keeps coming up. Again, we have not made any final decisions, our first day of school is still August 30th. You know, we find it prudent to make sure that we have a complete data set, we're still looking at the most current data because as we have seen throughout, a lot can change with the data in a short period of time. Next slide, please, Mr. Fritz. So we've gotten a lot of questions about, you know, what is the data we've been looking at? And again, I'll reiterate, it is the same trusted data points that we've been looking out throughout the pandemic and throughout the situation when we've been making decisions. So, you know, our DART team gathers weekly and I think it's important for me to point out, our DART team is an advisory team to me. They do not make decisions, there is no voting, there is no one on the team. And I will tell you that most, most of the time, the team does not always agree on every point. And that's my job to sift through the information, they're they're experts in fields, they're to share their information. And it's my job to make decisions based on all of the data points that we're looking at. You can see of the data points, the number one is school health data. And all of the decisions that we made last year was always based on our school health data. Well, we're not in school right now. So you you have very limited school health data to base it on. Right now, our school health data would just be on the activities that are started. And you can look at our dashboard that is available online, we've had minimal situations to look at from a school health data standpoint. The number of cases, again, will play a huge factor, quarantine attendance, looking at all those different pieces of that school data. Our core ZIP code data is number two on the list, but I would say one and two are critical points of what we review. Certainly, Hamilton County data is important, but it's a distant third because there are things that happen in Hamilton County on other parts of Hamilton County that are not happening here in the core ZIP code. And I recognize, I've heard from community members, well, we don't just stay inside the Sycamore bubble. I certainly understand that, but when you look at the residential data, the core data that you, you know, when it comes through about Hamilton County, there are hotspots around the county that are not necessarily Sycamore. So that's a critically important data point for us to review. And then last but not least, state of Ohio data, again, it's a data point, but it it's obviously a global data point, something that's much larger than just our area. So we learned so much last year that can change throughout, which is why we need to assess the data on a weekly basis. And and you can see it's a combination of data points, it's not just one. You know, I think people are looking for what's that hard and fast number? It it isn't that type of situation, there are so many critical data points that we need to review. It's a culmination and a combination of all those data points. Next slide, please, Mr. Fritz. So again, you can see those trusted data points and you can see what we have right now, again, very limited school data since school doesn't start for another couple of weeks. Our core ZIP code data, it has gone up, our seven day moving average and daily cases has gone from 4.125 at the last board meeting. It is sitting at 6.875 as of today. The percent of eligible vaccinated is up a little bit in our area. And then you can see Hamilton County has gone from 16 cases, average daily cases to 25 since the last board meeting and minimal movement in their vaccination status. And then state of Ohio, the positivity rate is up 3.6%, moving from five to 8.6. Next slide, please, Mr. Fritz. One, really quickly, Mr. Fritz, if you want to go, if you can go back to that data slide, just to make sure that last Friday, we put out a video, you know, based on our our information if school were to start today. You know, we we were stating that masking or facial coverings would be required at the K to six realm. And then seven through 12 would be a recommended and encouraged environment. So again, that's that's based on the data that we are seeing right now. So if if today, if school were to start today, the numbers have gone up since that video has gone out. Again, we will continue to update those videos weekly, leading up to the start of school. And so just a quick review of our facial covering policy, if a requirement is in place, there are places that it's not applicable. If a student and staff are eating, if they're engaged in outdoor activities, if they're engaged in an activity where facial coverings would significantly impair a student's ability to receive necessary services or it presents a safety hazard. So again, there are times that they might not be in place due to some of those exceptions. And again, being outside, our staff has done an amazing job of being able to give students mask breaks or facial covering breaks, getting outdoors and and making sure that they have that ability to get outdoors and and remove their mask. As a reminder, if there were a mandate put into place from either state, local or federal, that would supersede any of our facial covering policies. And, you know, at this time, there is no mandate or requirement in place. Next slide, please. Should facial coverings be required at any point this year? Again, we will consider facial covering waivers for documented health or developmental health conditions. Families can find that waiver on our website listed on the screen. Families should complete the form and provide verification from a medical or healthcare provider if you are seeking a waiver. Return it to the school nurse who will submit it to the district for approval. And we encourage families, if you are pursuing this, to get it in place before the start of school so that that would be on file. Next slide, please. So I think it's important for our community to see the quarantine guidance that came out from Hamilton County Public Health. And it is consistent with the Ohio Department of Health, which is, if if you look at their guidance, this is, I would say, a loosening of the restrictions that they put on last year. So you can see it is good news for kids, again, to stay in school and not be disrupted in their education. So first off, any positive cases, we would need to self isolate those students. And regardless of mask usage or not, positive cases have to self isolate for 10 days. However, if there's a confirmed case, like you see on the screen, the young man on the right has a confirmed positive case of COVID-19. If the confirmed case is masked and the close contact is masked, regardless of vaccination status, the close contact can remain in school and does not need to quarantine. The close contact would have to wear a mask while at school for 14 days or seven days if they receive a negative PCR test on days five to seven of the monitoring period. So I know that's a lot of information, but again, that's a little bit looser of the restrictions that were last year. Because, you know, students were quarantined even if they were wearing a mask. So the loosening of that restriction is is a positive for our students being able to stay in school. Next slide, please. If the confirmed case is not masked and the close contact is masked and unvaccinated, the close contact can still remain in school and does not need to quarantine. Again, the close contact would need to wear a mask indoors during that monitoring period. And if they came down with symptoms, then they would need to quarantine. No symptoms equals remaining in school and no disruption to their education. Next slide, please. If the confirmed case is not masked and the close contact is not wearing a mask but is vaccinated, the close contact will remain in school and does not need to quarantine. Again, the close contact would need, after being exposed, would need to wear a mask indoors during that monitoring period. And next slide, the the only negative guidance. This is the only situation where the the student would be required to quarantine. If both the confirmed case is unmasked and the close contact is unmasked and not vaccinated, they would have to quarantine. they would have to quarantine for that period of time. Next slide, please, Mr. Fritz. So, you know, importantly, you know, things that we need to think about if a student does get quarantine, you know, obviously, we want to minimize disruption to learning for our students, which is why, even when a requirement is not in place, when we're recommending and encouraging facial coverings, we want to make sure we have supports in place to assist them with that process. So if you recall, last year or during the last school year, there were weekly guides available. I think we found that as a best practice for our teaching staff to be able to provide information for our students and really for any absence, it provides quality information for our students and they can access that on Blackboard. So we will be maintaining that practice this year. And again, providing them access to all the educational materials they need to be able to stay on track with their classes and their coursework. We are, we are not requiring teachers to allow for a live streaming option or requiring teachers to do that. There are certainly teachers that may select to do some of that, but it is not a requirement based on those weekly guides and being able to connect with the teacher. Next slide, please, Mr. Fritz. And so we've got a number of opportunities coming up that are helping students transition back into school. As I mentioned before, Green 101 is going on this week. It has been fantastic to be in the building with kids and seeing them interact with their peers. And certainly the energy and excitement of just being back in the school environment. We've had over 100, 360 students sign up for Green 101, which is the largest that we've ever had in the history of Green 101, which is pretty exciting. You can tell kids are excited to come back. On Friday, we'll be offering Back to the Building Day for returning virtual students in K4. Similarly, the junior high is offering a return, returning virtual students back to the building day next Tuesday. I will tell you that the events filled up nearly as soon as we released the information. So we are working to try to find ways that we can assist families. But, you know, appreciate your patience and, you know, we are working with our coordinators and our building administrators to try to offer additional spots. On August 27th, as you can see, our, our children's, our school-based therapists from Children's Hospital are hosting a virtual session to help students again with that return to learning and getting back to an in-school environment. And then all of our buildings on August 30th and 31st, your students will be able to transition back into the building. It'll be about half of the students in the building each day, again, to ease that transition and get them refamiliarized with the protocol of, of the building. And then during the school year, we will have certainly increased PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Supports for our students, all of our students, district-wide, reminding them to be safe, be responsible and be respectful and be a problem solver. So next slide, please, Mr. Fritz. So upcoming vaccination clinics. Again, we are not requiring people to get vaccinated. It is not our encouragement. We have been asked by public health officials and also by the gut, excuse me, excuse me.
If you, excuse me, this is, excuse me, excuse me, we will have order in the meeting.
Again, we're not encouraging it, we're not requiring it. We were asked by the governor and public health officials to make the opportunities available. And that is our interaction with it at this point. So again, it's making it available and making it readily available for our families. We've had a positive response from our community to having access to that. So certainly that's a choice that families and community members will have to make. Next slide, please, Mr. Fritz. And then lastly, I think it's, obviously, it's already been up. But again, we want people to go on, take a look at our health, health and safety protocols that we'll have in place, again, to ensure that this school year is safe and healthy and returning our students back to an in-school environment and keeping them there for the duration of our, our school year. So appreciate the school board's indulgence and allowing me to, again, continue to update you about our Healthy Ace Protocol and certainly entertain any questions that you might have for me before we move forward with the rest.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Um, does the board have any questions before we proceed to public comment? And we can also have questions after the public comment section.
I do have a question, Mr. Lewis. In the, what is the standard or what is the number of students that if we're quarantined, that the school would need to close?
So, you know, that's a pretty difficult question. So, you know, it, it's a case by case basis. We're going to have to look at, you know, what's the impact to the school environment? How far is the spread? There is no magical percentage, percentage, Mr. Comaford. It would be based on just looking at the overall data, seeing how it's impacting our school. And if we were concerned about additional spread or, you know, not feeling safe in the school environment, then we would move to a remote environment.
No, I'm not talking about the health factor. I'm talking about there's a certain amount of students that need to be in school for the school day to count on the record. If I'm, I think I'm not mistaken on that point. There's a certain percentage of students that have to be in the school on a given day.
And again, I, I don't know that there's a magical number in, as far as I know, from a state guideline, unless Mrs. Weber knows. But what I would say is, you know, last year, if you recall, we shut down at the junior high when about 40% of the students were in quarantine. But again, it wasn't a magic number. You know, I think people recall there was, you know, 20% for the flu. If you got to 20, you started getting concerned. But there, as far as I know, there's no state mandated number that if you hit this number, you got to shut down.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is, was not meant to be, you know, a gotcha question. It was just, it just, my understanding is that the whole idea is to try to keep the schools open.
Certainly.
That's the intent behind what your proposed plan is, is to maximize the number of students that are in school each day.
Based on the quarantine guidelines, yes, that the, again, reacting to the data, looking at where we're at right now, if we had to make a decision today, that's why we would be making that decision is, is based on the data, based on community spread, based on our zip code data. I don't have school data to base it on, but again, minimize disruption, keeping kids in school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to talk a little bit about the last board meeting because I think there was maybe some confusion as to what was done a little bit with.
Mr. Mercurio, could you talk closer to the mic? It's hard to hear you.
Sure, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, I wanted to talk about the last board meeting because I think there's a little bit of confusion as to maybe what took place and just kind of clear that up. I tried to say in my comments that what we were doing is recertifying our plan from last year, which was an approach that was appreciated by all. You know, the board governs through policy. And right now, our policy for facial coverings is mandated masks. That's something that was passed last year and for in-school during the school year. In order to change that policy and move to a consideration of an optional mask environment, you have to have two readings to change a policy. So we did do that at our last board meeting. That was the first reading. And the next item on our agenda will be the second reading and vote for being able to have optional masks at some point during the course of this year. If, if school started today, once school starts, it would be mandated that masks would be required. So that is just something I wanted to clear up. Giving the superintendent authority to handle the operational aspects of the district is what a board does. Mr. Lewis pointed out icy roads and closing it. We're not going to hold an emergency board meeting. I'll give you a couple of examples. Last year of how we, how we used our approach and our plan that was, was used to close the school. I think you mentioned the junior high. I think it was the second week in December on a Thursday night, the superintendent, the quarantining numbers escalated up to 40 to 45%. And the superintendent made the call to close the school. I'll also point out that superintendent relaxed a number of the protocols and parameters that were in place as we learned more about surfaces not really being conducive to transferring virus. There was less cleaning, the playground situation changed. The kids were able to play with more balls, things really opened up. None of those things happened with the board. That's something that the superintendent makes a call, but of course, he's considering all guidance that, that he has. And minimizing the quarantines is a big deal. Last year, we had a virtual option. We, we need kids in school. We got our report card results and, you know, we're working through that right now. But there's some kids in this district that haven't been in school for 18 months. We need to understand that minimizing quarantines has to be a goal. At the same time, we understand that, you know, we're all in a different place with this virus. All of us have looked at our own data sets. And I, I would say the overwhelming majority of you in this room have relaxed your masking parameters over the course of this past year. Whatever you're looking at, whatever you've decided on, you have. And we have to start moving forward with some of this. And I think we have a really good plan. We're going to react to it. And, you know, hopefully these cases go down and we move forward. But, um, I just wanted to bring that information and just say, hey, you don't, you got to understand that this is how a board meeting works, how a board governs. We don't run that day-to-day of the schools. We have full faith in our superintendent Chad Lewis to do that. And I am certain that we will continue to make sound decisions for our kids in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mercurio. That was very helpful.
Yeah, I would just like to add, I can make a comment. At the last meeting, I did make comments that my concern was around our youngest learners. Those are K through six graders that are not ineligible for the vaccine. Grateful to the work of our administration and Dart team over the last two weeks to consider this. Just yesterday, our governor made a statement that if a child can't be vaccinated, the best way to ensure a good year is for that child to wear a mask. For me, this is not, not a discussion about the effectiveness of masks, the vaccine, how sick the kids are getting. I believe it is the fundamental responsibility of this school board and administration to ensure that our kids remain in the classroom. I certainly hope this is something our entire community can agree upon. We have to, we have to move forward and return to focusing on educating our children in the classroom.
All right, thank you. All right, we will proceed with the public participation portion of the meeting. We are going to be limited to three minutes per person. And Mrs. Wagner, I think you're going to be helping, right, with the timing of that. But before we begin, I need a motion from the, from the board to extend the public comment section to 30 minutes.
So moved?
Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Motion passes. And just a reminder, when I will call your name up and then I will call the next person who's going to be on deck. I would ask that everybody be respectful of everyone's opinion. I would really appreciate no applause or hooting and hollering if we can try to get through this so we can hear everyone's opinion. So the first person up is Jim Singler and Amanda Middleton is on deck.
I'll just add one item. We don't have the clock this evening, so Mr. Singler, you can start us out by role modeling this process. Mrs. Wagner's phone will go off when the three minutes are over, but she's going to give you a signal at about the 30-second mark when you're almost done. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jim Singler and I reside in Palmetto's. Thank you for this opportunity to address the school board and the public. I have one child in the school district, age seven, at Sims Elementary, another one on the way in. We heard from Mr. Lewis last week that if the decision had to be made now, that he would mandate masks for children, grades, grades K through six. Grade seven through 12 would not have to wear a mask. These masks are either part of the Sycamore dress code, which requires six months' public notice to change the dress code, which has not been established, or they're a medical device which requires informed consent from a parent, which you do not have. So why would we mask grades K through six? Of course, it's because they're under 12 and they've not had the opportunity to get the vaccine. This is discrimination based upon vaccine status. Ohio House Bill 244 passed this year specifically prohibits discrimination based upon vaccine status, including precautions that differ from the activities or precautions of an individual who has received the vaccine. As you well know, this law does not take effect until October 14th. But if you implement the masking policy as proposed after October 14th, you will be in violation of this law. This board has lamented the fact that the state will not mandate masks. You've been looking for guidance from the state. Here it is, folks, a duly, a law duly passed by our state legislature. What more guidance do you need?
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Singler. Amanda Middleton, you're up, and Shannon Wintheiser, you're on deck.
Hello. I come before you tonight as a neighbor, volunteer, friend, and most importantly, a parent. I am asking you to make masks optional for our schools. Please note, I am not asking that you ban masks, only that you afford all parents the same rights to make that choice for their child. My children wore a mask every day last year despite not being heard in the classroom and feeling isolated from their friends because they couldn't carry on conversations. We have seen the adverse effects on a daily basis. Last year, we were given a choice. We could send our children to school in masks or we could keep them home without masks. Parents were allowed to decide what would be best for their family and their children based on their circumstances. Why is that choice being taken away? Have the parents in our district suddenly become unfit? Do so many of us suddenly not have the best interest of our children at heart? Can you say to me today that each of you know my children and my family better than I do? Have my rights guaranteed me by the state of Ohio and the United States of America been repealed? The Constitution of the United States recognizes certain inalienable rights afforded to our citizens. Among these are fundamental rights, which are defined in various Supreme Court rulings as rights which are so implicit in the concept of ordered liberty that neither liberty nor justice would exist if they were sacrificed. Further, the Supreme Court's decision in Washington versus Glucksberg outlines certain special liberties afforded US citizens and protected by the 14th Amendment to include the right to direct the education and upbringing of one's children. Forcing my child to wear a mask against my wishes is in direct violation of my fundamental rights as protected by the Constitution. Per the FDA, masks used and/or marketed to help stop the spread of disease are classified as Class 1 medical devices. Other Class 1 medical devices include oxygen tents, blood specimen collection kits and laryngoscopes. Am I to allow the board or the superintendent to make a decision to use these devices for my child as well? There is no evidence that the use of masks is beneficial to children in preventing the spread of COVID-19. Even the FDA, on their page regarding face masks, answers the question, do face masks provide protection from coronavirus? By saying only that masks may help prevent people who have COVID-19 from spreading the disease. The World Health Organization and UNICEF in August of last year declared that children aged six to 11 should only wear masks in areas with widespread transmission and after consultation with parents and caregivers. According to the Ohio State Bar Association, minor children must have consent of a parent or guardian before receiving medical care. I am here to clearly, publicly and unequivocally state, I do not give my consent. I do not relinquish my rights as a parent.
All right, thank you, Ms. Shannon Wintheiser. Martha Shields, you're on deck.
Hi, my name is Shannon Wintheiser. I live in Daventry in Blue Ash, and I have an incoming kindergartner and a younger daughter as well. I'm here today to talk about the risks, the real risks and the ramifications of the pandemic to the children in this community happening every week right here in these hallways. I doubt anyone in this room knows of any children who have died from COVID or have even been hospitalized in our surrounding area. I haven't talked to anyone anywhere actually who has, and that is because it is exceedingly rare. One in 4.6 million in the US, to be exact, and all of them were already extremely fragile. But the damage being done in response to an exceedingly rare event is catastrophic. This is just a small snapshot of the totality of what has hap, our, what has happened to our children so far in this community. 10-year-old girl in our district developed migraines this past year. She's never had them before. She's now on medication for these migraines that were caused by masking. A special needs seventh grader. A special needs seventh grader who's autistic has speech impediments and cannot be understood when wearing a mask. Her face is paralyzed and she cannot adequately express herself. I don't need to tell you how her school year went. Eight-year-old from Blue Ash Elementary asked when, how he felt about returning to school this year in masks. He said he wanted to go to his room and cry. A second grader at Sims who developed a rash on his nose that wouldn't go away, only to later find out it was actually a staph infection. This would be a good time to let the school board and the superintendent know that staph infections have become increasingly common in children on their faces. And a family in Iowa is currently suing their school districts because their little girl developed a staph infection three times on her face and it was determined by their doctor that it was from masking. I'll keep you posted on how that litigation goes. I understand you're under pressure. You're under pressure from the government, from Children's Hospital, shame on them, under pressure from some people sitting in this room. But I'm hoping you all still have the ability to think autonomously. You still have rational thought and the ability to look at all of the data. No, I'm not just talking about the case level, zip code level, Hamilton County level testing data, as you guys all say week after week. What I'm talking about is the rest of the data. So for some reason, you seem to be fixated on that one small piece of data at the expense of other information, including the question of if masks actually worked to stop transmission in schools. The former CDC Dr. Robert, Director Dr. Robert Redfield doesn't seem to think so. And he just stated this last week in an interview. As did the Director of the NIH, Francis Collins, just yesterday admitted that there isn't actually any data showing this. In fact, the only two studies that have looked at this issue, one is on the CDC website. I was going to pass it out tonight, I forgot. Both show that masking children doesn't have a statistically significant impact on transmission in schools, both of them. And those are the only two of their kind that have compared schools that masked and had optional masking during this past year. There are no other studies that look at that. So what about the data? I, I ask you, are you going to ignore all this data? The data on that all the kids are suffering, the data that masks don't mitigate the risk in schools? And if you choose to ignore the rest of this data, the other side that's required to make this decision, we all have a duty as parents and as a community to ask why? Why is the rest of this data being ignored? Thank you.
Okay, Martha Shields, you're up. Anthony Wintheiser, you're on deck.
Good evening. My name is Martha Shields. I have a senior here at Sycamore High School. And I'm also a registered nurse. For 38 years, I've been a registered nurse. I've worked in many areas. Psychiatry. Most recently, I've been a school nurse for four and a half years and I've seen all this stuff go on. I did a little research again, as I was putting this thing down here. Children are not super spreaders, even if they're unvaccinated, they're not super spreaders. Mask mandates, especially in schools, do not reduce school or community transmission. Children are extremely at a low risk from death. They face higher mortality risk from the flu virus or COVID. Actually, there's a 10 times more risk of suicide than than the COVID. Even with the Delta variant, the risk for children's death are extremely low. Hamilton County is near herd immunity. They say 30,000 people need to be vaccinated, they may be there. You don't necessarily have to be vaccinated to have immunity. I heard Mr. Lewis talk about the articles here and there. I think you all have been deprived of all the research because if you go online, what you're going to get is this is misinformation. This is the real information. There's reputable doctors, America, America's front line doctors, for example. Ryan Cole, for example, there are more out there, have had videos removed so that we won't see them. I want to say something very quickly about the about the vaccine. That offends me greatly. That is an experimental vaccine. The FDA has not approved it yet. There have been thousands of people who have died as a result of taking that vaccine. They're not having enough information to see is with effects of the human reproductive system and more. And, and even more myocarditis is a big symptom of taking that vaccine in young people. And I don't know, it's just wrong. And all these things, all this staph infection and all that stuff, I can tell you this much. If I had to take my child, my daughter to the doctor, you all would be getting the bill. And if my, if I elected to have my daughter take that vaccine, which I would never do, you all would be getting sued if, if there were a side effect. You would be getting sued for allowing that clinic to be held in this, in this facility. Thank you very kindly.
Okay, Anthony Wintheiser, you're up and Samuel Godar, you're on deck.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Wintheiser. I live at Catalina Alley in Blue Ash and I'm the father of two girls in the school district. In last week's Healthy AIDS Update, Mr. Lewis used the word data 10 times to describe how he would make his decision on whether to mandate masks. Mr. Lewis, you said that if you had to make the decision that day, given the troubling data, you would mask children K through six. My question to you is why, given the appropriate context, does this data trouble you? While I applaud your efforts to keep track of the rolling average of new cases and trends in our zip codes, data without the appropriate context is meaningless at best and counterproductive policy at worst. I have three questions for you to try and put some context on the latest data from our zip codes. Question one. Has anyone asked of the seven new cases per day, how many are among children under 18? ODH data to date would suggest that it's less than one per day. Question two. Has anyone asked what the survival rate is among Ohio children infected with COVID? Based on ODH data, again, the answer is at least 99.995%. Since most of the children who died with COVID were already severely ill. Question three, last but not least. Has anyone asked when, at the current rate of infection, we might expect one child in our district to unfortunately die from COVID? The conservative answer, again, using ODH data, is 130 years from now. Sometime around the year 2151. Context is important because without it, it's impossible to correctly account for and balance the risks and benefits of a particular decision. Is masking thousands of children every year for 130 years to prevent one theoretical death worthy trade-off? If you think like so many do, that any action to prevent even a single death, even if it comes 130 years from now is justified, and the action to be taken is to mask children K through six, I have two follow-up questions for you. My first question is, can you please send me the randomized control trial study that shows that masks prevent the spread of airborne viruses in schools? After you send it to me, can you please send it to the CDC, who in internal emails amongst themselves have admitted that no such study exists? My second question is, can you please share with me what data supports a decision to mask children K through six, but not seven through 12, given that both age groups have the same survival rate? And the latter would certainly be more likely to wear masks appropriately. I've just sent you an email with these questions and look forward to your answers. I plan to share them at the next board meeting so we can all learn more about your data-driven decision-making. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Samuel Godar, you're up. Brian Kennedy, you're on deck.
Yeah, hi, my name is Samuel Godar and I live in 989385 Canton's Rand Court in Sims Township. I have four children in Sycamore School ahead. I have PhD in immunology, was supposed to get MIT Wyatt Institute in Boston, and I'm running my own biotech company, doing oncology and immunology research. I want to talk about masks and vaccinations. Let's start with some statistics. The total number of children aged five to 18 that died of COVID-19 in Ohio during the whole pandemic is two. The total number of children aged zero to 15 that died of all reasons in Ohio in 2020 is 538. So it's two versus 500 something. So this is not about saving lives of children, it's about saving older people or middle-aged people, I guess like me, which is a noble deed, but I do not think that the adults and older generation and I have any moral ground to tell children to put on masks, reduce their oxygen intake by six to eight hours a day, force them to re-inhale their CO2 and let them struggle with depression and other mental issues after lockdowns anymore. They did that sacrifice for more than a year. It is time to make that mask, the mask permanently optional. Just to be proactive, I am here to argue against possible mandatory vaccination against COVID-19. And these are coming. We see the strong governmental, corporate and media pressure to install them. Again, the same moral argument, maybe even stronger, apply to mandatory vaccinations. Why should the younger generation be forced to take the vaccine whose long-term effects are not fully understood? It should be the other way around. We should bear the burden in the situation, in this situation more than our children. Vaccinate elderly and other vulnerable people if they want to. Why? Mass vaccinations using a single protein at COVID-19 create more opportunity and selection pressure for resistant variants to emerge. As we learned from the recent data from Israel and other highly vaccinated countries, most of the hospitalized patients have been fully vaccinated. It took less than eight months to make these vaccines less effective. Vaccinate the vulnerable people voluntarily. If it means to, my children will not receive the currently available vaccines against the current strain of I might, COVID-19. If it means to start homeschooling the future, that is what I'm going to do. We will do the same in the case of prolonged mask mandates. At the end, I would like to ask Superintendent Chad Lewis to expand his DART team to make a 50/50 person ratio between people that support and those that oppose mask mandates. The opposing petition suggests that this would be a fair ratio. Thank you for your attention.
All right, thank you. Brian Kennedy, you're up. Roy Brown, you're on deck.
Good evening. I spoke last, at the last meeting, I wanted to note for the record that every single one of you were not wearing masks. Now a handful of you are. Nice to see that you got the choice to do what you wanted to do. Couple minutes ago, Paul here, Paul said that he doesn't care if masks work. That is absurd. Data, when certain data is valuable, certain data is not. Certain data is applicable, certain data is not. Nowhere did any of the data you presented here this evening break any of those cases down by age. If you're not taking that into account, your data is useless. Now, let's talk about, I actually emailed every single one of you. No one responded. I said, what, show me the data, the risk reward of using a mask to not using a mask. None of you responded, so let me help you out. Parents in Florida took six masks of kids that had been worn between five and eight hours. All of them freshly laundered or new. We all know these kids were in masks multiple times in a day, but this was freshly laundered or new masks. And they took six. They went to the University of Florida Mass Spectometry Research and Education Center. Five of them came back contaminated with parasites, bacteria, fungi. Three of them, so half of them, came back with these. Pneumonia, tuberculosis, meningitis, sepsis, another pneumonia. A UTI that's resistant to antibacterial, E. coli, Lyme disease, diphtheria, Legionnaires' disease. And multiple staff, like was mentioned earlier before here. One of the staffs in particular has a very high mortality rate. It's not just, oh, just wear the mask, it's no big deal. There's no risk. Yes, there are. And if there weren't, you guys would have presented us with data to show that there isn't. I've asked and you didn't. Not one of you. Not one. And then we have somebody who says, it doesn't even matter where the masks work. That's absurd. How can we ask our kids to do something when our leaders go, it doesn't even matter if it works or not? That's not how we, that's not how a community should function. That is, that's, that's mind-boggling, sir. Truly mind-boggling. We all should have a choice. It's very simple. You have the choice. Every single one of you, as I pointed out last time, you are more susceptible to COVID. You're more susceptible to the Delta virus. Whether you're vaccinated or not, if you're going to use data, present it to us. Present data about the risk or the reward on these masks. If the idea is just cases, but you don't look at to what you're, what you're trying to do to address those cases and whether that thing works, whether these masks work, then you're not using valid data. This has to be obvious.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Roy Brown, you're up. Kim Reese, you're on deck.
That's enough. Man, I, I wish you guys had listened to me a couple of weeks ago. You know, when I was a first-year law student, a naive law, law, new student, asked one of our old professors, you know, when people have rights and people have disagreements, why don't they just work it out? And the professor told everyone, you know, sometimes you need a lawyer to show up in a suit. Well, today you have a lawyer showing up in a suit. I've given you guys homework. You have 12 days for your final exam, right? Start of school. You could still pass, you don't have much time. In those passouts today, dozens, dozens of peer-reviewed studies from trusted sources, CDC, NIH, Harvard, Stanford, hundreds, hundreds of medical doctors, research analysts, research professors, all with the conclusion that masks do not work, especially for children. You guys have 12 days. You better use that time wisely because there are going to be lawyers showing up with other suits, okay? I just want you to know, every one of these kids who wears a mask, if one of them, one of them is injured, it will be on you. And it will be reckless because you own this information now. You can throw it away, Mr. Ballant. You can walk out, you can toss it, toss it to the side. It may not be your trusted source, but you're not the one who decides what trust it is. That's done in a different venue. Mr. Lewis, you've put yourself in a very difficult position. There are going to be a lot of requests for exemptions coming. And you better take the time to look at what you've been given and find out what you think an eventual court will think is a trusted source. You see, the, the, these things swing in pendulums. Right now, you may feel happy and fine with your decision and think the last 18 months were great because you have some form of qualified immunity potentially. But there's a reason it says qualified. Because when this pendulum swings back and there are injuries of children who were forced into masks, psychological injuries, talked about by Amanda here, physical injuries, facial injuries, anxiety. When you don't get it hypox, what is it again? Hypoxia, when you don't get oxygen in your blood. The first kid that passes out, their parent is going to want to blame someone, Mr. Lewis. And if you deny an exemption on the basis of your supposed authority, medical authority, I don't want to be in your shoes. I think you guys need a second, another second opinion, but this isn't a doctor's opinion. I think you need a second legal opinion. Because I'll do everything I can to make sure that this hangs around your neck when the first child gets hurt by this policy.
Kimberly. Kimberly, you're up and Gina Mahoney, you're on deck.
My name is Kimberly Reese. I come to you as a seasoned parent in this school district. Seasoned. I'm the current president of the Blue Ash Citizens for Racial Equity. I was the former president of Sycamore Concerned Parents. I was the music and dance coordinator for the, for, and volunteer for Operation Give Back under the original founder. I am a member, current member of Cultural Responsive Practices Team here in the school district. I'm a former member of the Sycamore Parent Advisory Committee. I'm former member of Sycamore High School Diversity Committee. Former PTO President, served as VP in several PT boards, the PTO boards, as Chair in numerous committees on PTAs when we had PTAs, that was a long time ago, and PTOs in the Sycamore School District. My oldest daughter is 37 years old. My youngest is 14. Two, five of my children have special needs. Four of my children are on the autism spectrum. Two of them have an autoimmune disease. One has, of the four that have autism, they have autoimmune disease, diabetes and asthma. We are Sycamore. This is ridiculous. What has happened here and what I have seen, I have, I was, I had no intention of coming and speaking. I had no intentions. My goal was to make sure that those of us who choose to wear masks and send our children to school with masks had the opportunity to speak. I'm a publicist by trade. I've been doing PR for 20 years for myself. Prior to that, I worked for two Fortune 500 companies and this is what I do. Let me say this, I am flabbergasted. Absolutely flabbergasted at what at what I have seen happen in our district. As someone who has earned her salt here, who has worked tirelessly with most of these people that sit on the school board, this gentleman right here, these people right here, and some of you who are in this audience, I am speaking to everybody in this room. I am flabbergasted, and shame on you for threatening this boot, this school. There are threats that have happened in this district, threats. Children are being threatened. And let me say this, I'm a Christian woman. I'm saved, sanctified, and Holy Ghost-filled. I pray, I intercede on behalf of not just me, my children, other people's children in this district. There are people who are sitting here who I attend church with, with. I'm a member of the Montgomery Community Church and have been a member of Montgomery Community Church for many, many years. I have volunteered at Blue Ash Community Church and Branches Church in Loveland. I have sown my seeds at Matthew 25 Ministries and other places here in this city and in this area. We can do better than this. Have I, have I had three minutes?
Yes, you have.
We are, we should be ashamed of ourselves.
Your time is up. Thank you. Miss Gina Mahoney. And Gary Mahoney, you're on deck.
Hi, my name is Gina Mahoney. This is my husband, Gary. We live on Pfeiffer Road in Montgomery. I am a Sycamore graduate, and I have three kids, one who graduated from Sycamore in 2020, one going into fifth grade at Green, and one entering fourth at Mapledale. Both of my younger children went to school face-to-face last year in a mask. I'm not anti-mask, nor are we anti-vax. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my son. We have been contacting the school board regarding issues, and Mr. Lewis, regarding issues. He had last year due to masking and even met with Mrs. Wise over the summer. The reason I felt called to speak tonight is because of a conversation I had with someone who was pro-mandatory mask after the last board meeting. It has become clear to me that the root of the issue for many of us has been lost. Just like you, we are not here for any other reason but for the welfare of our children. Last year, there were situations that occurred that made me realize that many of these COVID precautions for our children are making them so fearful of dying and living that I'm afraid they will be forever scarred by this. Also, punishing children for breathing is beyond my comprehension. My son confessed to me one night at bedtime that he felt like a prisoner in his body because of the mask and the plastic partitions between them. He then came home one day and told us that a child had called him out in class when his mask came down below his nose. She said, pull your mask up. You're going to get me sick, and I'm going to go home and kill my mother. I asked the psychologist what her thoughts were on the damage that that could cause, and she said, that could cause PTSD. The last straw for me was when I picked my son up from school, and he was about to pass out. He was pale and lethargic and was clearly suffering from heat exhaustion. And I know you said the kids do not have to wear masks in gym, and maybe that's a new thing, but that was not the case last year. They were masking, they were masking when they were running the mile. He said he had just gotten out of gym where he was forced to mask. I asked him why he didn't stop and take a mask break, and he said he did. He said he and other kids go in the bathroom, and I quote, sneak a breath when they can. I'm frankly shocked that these issues are being completely ignored by you guys. Over the last few years, Sycamore has taken pride in the fact that a child's mental well-being is as important as their physical well-being. And I love that. I love that about Sycamore. If this is the case, the atmosphere created flies in the face of that. I ask that we stop the back and forth and understand that masking is not best for all children.
Thank you, Gina Mahoney. Gary Mahoney, you're up. Sarah Cormier, you're on deck.
Parents know what's best for their children.
Okay, Sarah Cormier, you're up, and Mitchell, Avis, Monica Schneider, you're on deck. I believe you're online.
Hello. This is, I'm Sarah Cormier. I live in Morgan's Trace neighborhood, and I'm back again today with some questions, specifically in regards to the quarantine guidelines that we've talked about this evening and that, that seemed to me to be driving some of these masking decisions. So do ODH guidelines override parental discretion? Has the district considered that last year zero quarantine kids got sick? And can it be proven that masks are the reason why, or was there some other reason? Do we know? Per the quarantine guidelines, contacts who are both fully vaccinated and masked also need not quarantine after exposure. And so the rationale for masking the little kids now is to keep them in school to avoid, you know, quar, having to quarantine, but based on the guidelines and that rationale, doesn't it stand to reason that vaccine or not, they'll still be, you know, masked indefinitely? Oh, that's, that's really weird. Okay, well, too, okay. Does anyone realize these are guidelines and not laws? And that no one really needs to follow them, or am I mistaken, and that no district is really obligated to follow them? And so claiming that masking is the only way to keep kids in school is therefore a baseless talking point? Am I wrong? Many of us in this room are attending our third consecutive board meeting. Sitting maskless for many of us, and until tonight, side by side for at least, and for at least as, or sorry, sitting side by side for at least as long as what a typical class is. So how do we justify masking little kids whose viral load is a fraction of ours when we can do the same activity with no problems? Is that logical? Is it the honorable way to treat our children? No. Is it anecdotal? Well, yeah. But as Shannon pointed out, so is the basis of the government mandates that everyone, or guidelines that everyone wants to follow. Is it logical to follow a set of guidelines that are universal, given the unique circumstances in each district? Even Mike DeWine has talked about this. Cases still remain low in our zip codes, but how many of those cases have been children? What is the current case fatality rate for young children here? How many K through six kids in our district have had COVID and recovered? Has natural immunity been considered, and if not, why? Is there a certain case threshold to determine whether or not masks are needed or not, and if so, what is it? Why, when the survival rates for kids is so high, are we concerned with cases? Shouldn't we be looking at hospitalizations? Speaking of, how many of the three hospitalizations that have occurred between our two zip codes since May 9th were children? There's only been three. Have you reconciled our local data with the ODH guidelines and assessed if they're even applicable to us? Have you compared cases to hospitalizations for zero to 19-year-olds? Because I have. And I'd just still love to hear how anyone can believe that masking my six and eight-year-old is justified at this point. As I said to Mr. Lewis in a recent email, my innocent children solely rely on my husband and I to protect and advocate for them.
Okay, Sarah, your time is up. Thank you. Before we move on, I need a motion from one of the board members to extend the time for public comment to 30 additional minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Comper.
Hi.
Mr. Mercurio.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Ballack.
Hi.
Motion passes. Mitchell, Avis, and Monica Schneider, are you online, or are you there?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, you can begin whenever you would like.
Hi, my name is Mitchell Avis. I'm seven years old. I go to school at Mapledale Elementary. I live in Swain. In my opinion, masks should be required at my school. If masks are not required, many kids will not wear them, then kids might get COVID because we cannot be vaccinated yet. I don't like it when kids don't wear a mask around my brother. He is nine years old, and he has Down Syndrome. It could be very hard for him to recover from COVID. I want to be safe this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitchell, and thank you for staying up late and being so brave and coming to the board meeting. Thank you. Timothy Bresson, you're up next, and Zach Haynes, you're on deck.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Bresson. I have a son in the Sycamore School District. I'd like to start by thanking the board and the superintendent for your abrogation of your duties and responsibilities, your absolute lack of intestinal fortitude, and your feckless leadership. You've driven a major part of this community together to fight for their rights and the rights of their children. Thank you for that. You're also giving me a very big opportunity in my life. Because the first day you try to put my kid in a mask, I'm pulling him from school and homeschooling. I'll have to quit work to do it, but I'm going to do it. And I invite any parents that are tired of the failures of the public school system, contact me. Any teachers who are tired of the politics, the unions, and the mandates from on high, contact me. Together, we'll build a community that takes care of our children, educates them properly, and takes care of each other. Failings of the public schools are highlighted by Governor Kate Brown in Oregon, signing into law a bill that states a student won't have to demonstrate proficiency in reading, writing, or arithmetic to graduate from public schools. Since I would no longer be employed, I'll have plenty of time to do other things. Homeschooling is a lot more efficient. So I'll be able to do a campaign writing letters, not to you folks, state legislators. I'll be able to take leisurely trips up to Columbus, where I can sit down and talk to those legislators about current legislation having to do with school funding and student funding. I'll do everything I can to make sure that we get school vouchers in Ohio so that we can have choice and competition in the K through 12 education system. Every day the CitiC continues, you guys lose support. People are starting to see the data that contradicts the narrative, and more and more doctors, scientists, and professionals are coming out and saying that what we're doing now is having dire consequences in our national health. I'm not pulling out of the Sycamore community, nor am I advocating that. I am protecting my child and any others that don't want to be forced to do something in the community against their wishes. Once this foolishness ends, we will still be here in the community, and together, we will build it back better. Thank you.
Zach Haynes, you're up. Barbie Nojam, you're on deck.
I was going to talk about studies. I was going to ask you guys for specific data, data points, peer-reviewed studies that suggest or proves why you're masking children, only the young children, and, you know, proves that that's going to improve their, their health outcomes, but we're pro-kids. And, you know, I remember, it's probably some of you who changing my son's diapers, my two boys. Once you guys look me in the eyes to, you know, respect, and tuck in a minute tonight, and we say our prayers together. And we pray for you guys, too. Pray for our community. And I want to make very clear, there is nothing more important than the safety of my children. Breathing air is fundamental. When we're talking about forcing them to breathe in recycled air for hours on end without any conclusive evidence suggesting that that improves the health outcomes for our children, I'm going to talk about it at whatever medium I want, social media, any medium I want, to whoever I want, whenever we want. And if I had the loudest microphone on earth, I would fight for my children. Period. No one gets to tell me when I can say things, when I can't say things. My children mean more to me than they do to you. That's why we're here. We are pro-children. We don't want masks out of Sycamore. Anyone who wants to wear a mask can wear a mask. I don't know why we have to keep repeating that over and over. We're not anti-mask. We want it to be a parent's choice. We want it optional. Period. I'm not here for any other reason. We're not here for any other reason than for our children's health. The end, and we're not going anywhere.
Barbie Nojam, you're up. Jennifer Cotto, you're on deck.
Hi, my name is Barbie Nojam. I'm the parent of three sons within Sycamore Schools, two at the high school, one at Sims. I'm here tonight as a concerned mother questioning your tentative intention to mask our children under 12 while at school. I'd like to begin with stating that the fundamental problem with both sides of the mask debate is that it shouldn't be up for debate at all. It's as simple as this. You are not my child's parent or guardian. You will never be in a position to know what's best for my child better than I do. And I have not given you permission to make any health-related decisions for my children. You wouldn't follow my child around and force him to wear a jacket because, in your opinion, I failed to dress him properly that day? And I'm here to tell you that the decision whether or not a child should wear a mask is no different at all because it's just another piece of cloth that some people believe should be worn under certain circumstances, just like a jacket. While you may be inclined to suggest this is merely opinion, every single package I have ever read indicates clearly that the mask within is not intended as a medical device, that it is for personal use only, and several specify that it will not protect you against the COVID-19 virus. This is fact, not opinion. Yet there is consideration to require them, on young children, to protect them from a virus, a virus that the mask package states it can't protect you from. I'd like that logic explained to me in a way that makes a remote bit of sense. But mask or no mask, whatever a parent feels is best for their child is exactly what should happen. You don't dictate that I pack my child healthy options in their lunch. You don't determine when a sore throat or cough becomes a doctor visit. Why would the decision to wear a mask differ? It's a matter of personal choice on all accounts, and such a decision should never be made by anyone who is not medically responsible for that child. If you eliminate a parent's authority to make the decision of whether or not to mask their child, I want you to ask yourself if you are prepared to live with the gain of the known negative consequences derived from prolonged mask-wearing by children whose brains and bodies are still developing. Increased CO2 levels correspond with a decreased ability to concentrate, and that equals plummeting test scores for Sycamore Schools. Anxiety, depression, respiratory infections, dental problems, and facial sores equal a lot of avoidable, unnecessary absences, to say the least. I'm here because I care about the children. I'm here because you've not provided full transparency as to what exact information is governing, governing the decisions you are making for our children. I'm here because the science, the factual science, doesn't support your affliction to allow my child the option to breathe fresh air while at school. Masks don't prevent the transmission of this virus or any other for that matter, but it makes, if it makes some parents feel better, then that is the rightful choice. By requiring masks for the ineligible vaccination group, rather, our young children, who are we really protecting here? Their best interests or your seat at that table?
Jennifer Cotto, you're up, and Roger Pompous, you're on deck.
Good evening. I have one quick question. Well, I come to you as a brand-new parent to this school district, an incoming kindergartner. So I don't have any rapport with really any of you. I don't have rapport with a teacher, a principal, anybody. So this is my first experience with this district. So I want to say, when is enough enough? There is more to health than just the physical. Our children deserve to be safe in all of those aspects. Mental health is an, is an important aspect. Not only that, but social health, how they socialize with other kids and interact with adults. Did you know that the, that children as young as nine have had thoughts of suicide during these last 18 months? Are we really going to expose our children to this kind of mental? What, what's the word? Yeah, mental torture. To not truly live because of a virus that has a 99-plus percentage of survival for these kids, for all of us, really? You didn't live your childhood like this. I didn't live my childhood like this. I don't want any child to live like this. I am the most mama bear of mama bears. I would lay down my life for probably any child, actually, yes, any child that would come into my presence. I want you to think about these kindergartners who have never been in public school before. They've never seen a face at the school, never seen their teacher. They don't know anybody. Is it, is that a safe environment for five-year-olds? anybody. Is that a safe environment for five-year-olds? Is it conducive for learning? There is no clear or concise data that shows, at least according to the CDC, that shows that masks prevent the spread of COVID-19. But there is study after study after study that we've heard countless stories about that shows the consequences of these children wearing masks. So I ask again, when is enough enough? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Roger Pompous, you're up, and Jim Meal, you're on deck.
My name is Roger Pompous. I live in Fishwood Court, Montgomery, and I do applaud the board for allowing students to return to school. I know that that's something that we're all looking forward to. I never thought I would be here. I never thought I would have to be here. I never thought I would have to be here to give support to the school board for doing what they should be doing, and I applaud you for that. But here we are, a global pandemic, a raging Delta virus, now affecting children, and there's no vaccine for those under 12, and health experts are asking for the use of masks for those under 12. I was raised, like so many of you, with community values. I think of Jesus' own words, "Do unto others as you would have others do unto you." We have to think about not just ourselves, but our community and those other children, and I believe that the board is attempting to do that. Just this afternoon, I found out that Hamilton County CDC has raised its alert level to purple, the highest, and what does it say? "Severe exposure and spread. Only leave home for supplies and services." It says, "Follow all current health orders." So I want to applaud this board for their use of critical thinking, for the use of information provided by health experts, for their just common sense, and thank you for your courage in the face of so much opposition. I don't envy your position.
Thank you, Roger. Jim Meal, you're up, and Amanda Ferrier, you're on deck.
Good evening. My name is Jim Mealy. I live on Cooper Road, and thanks for having me. One of the many things that Winston Churchill said that always stuck with me was when he was recalling something, well, actually, the night before he was made Prime Minister. He said that he felt that his whole life had been but a preparation for this moment, and he knew that he must not fail. And then he said this. "Although I anticipated the morning, I slept soundly because I had no need for cheering thoughts or dreams. Facts are better than dreams." And a fact is this: if this pandemic had been presented in the beginning for what it was, a national health issue, we wouldn't be here tonight talking about masks. But the problem is that we were lied to by the White House and a certain news outlet for almost a year or more, and because of that, for some, masks and vaccines became an infringement on our freedoms and liberties. So tonight, these are the facts. He was left the playbook on how to deal with this pandemic. He ignored it. An office was created to prepare for pandemics. He gutted it. We had CDC officials in China to detect and contain outbreaks. He pulled them out. He tried, as always, to shift the blame, but the fact is that his actions left us unprepared. And then we have those who say, "Well, we don't need masks and vaccines. We trust God. God will protect us." A Tennessee pastor said this: "You trust God, but you wear a seatbelt. You trust God, but you use oven mitts. You trust God, but you have a smoke detector. You trust God, but you take your medicine. Acting with caution and wisdom does not indicate a lack of trust in God." Finally, science is not the truth. Science is finding the truth, and when science changes its opinion, it doesn't mean it lied to you. It means that it learned more. Believing in facts and science does not make you a liberal. It makes you literate. Masks and vaccines are about protecting yourself, your family, and your fellow man.
Thank you, Jim Mealy. Amanda Ferrier, you're up, and Cara Jacob, you're on deck.
Hello again. Amanda Ferrier from Sims Township. Tonight, I'm speaking to you on the topic of liberty and the duty of this board to immediately act to restore the rights and liberties of students and their families. We elected you to office believing you to be persons of integrity and sound judgment. We trusted you to obey your oath to uphold the law. We require you to swear before God that you would faithfully maintain allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and of this state. These documents are supreme law of our land and of this state, and they do not allow for any official to violate the rights of the people on the basis of a health emergency. Moreover, they do provide that only legislative bodies make law, not governors, or mayors, or Health Department officials. When higher-ranking authorities violate the people's liberties by means of orders, edicts, proclamations, or mandates that lack constitutional authority, the lesser-ranking authority, in this case, you, the school board, and the superintendent, has both the God-given right and the affirmative duty not to obey the superior authority, and if necessary, to actively resist them. This truth is known as the doctrine of lesser magistrates. The Magna Carta was based on the doctrine of lesser magistrates. The Declaration of Independence was based on the doctrine of lesser magistrates. The United States Constitution is based on this doctrine as well. And since executive orders and Health Department mandates are not law, this school board possesses the authority and the duty to ignore them and to actively resist them. Accordingly, this board should declare any face mask or other mandates to be invalid, unlawful, and unenforceable in any of its buildings or at any events under its jurisdiction. Also, in light of efforts by both federal and state governments to urge schools to influence children now aged 12 to 16, but soon to be, I guess, two and up, to submit to an experimental gene therapy they call a vaccine, this board should emphatically refuse to cooperate in any such scheme. You are probably aware that this so-called vaccine is not fully tested, nor is it approved by the FDA. But more importantly, efforts to encourage or to coerce children to become guinea pigs in this human experiment is completely outside the scope and realm of the schools which are here to educate, not vaccinate. In any event, since there are myriad of places and opportunities for obtaining these shots, there exists no compelling need for schools to become shot clinics. The citizens of this community recognize that this fight is not just about the masks and the vaccinations. It's a fight to restore moral and lawful order that some office holders want to destroy. We are counting on you to-
Thank you, Amanda. Your time is up. Cara Jacob, you're up.
Hi. My name is Cara Jacob, and I live on Ross Ave in Montgomery. I have two children who will be at Montgomery Elementary this coming school year. I understand that the thought of dealing with another COVID school year is difficult, and people are frustrated. I am too. Just when things seem to be getting better, we are back to surging case numbers, hospitals at capacity, and perhaps worst of all, we are seeing more kids being affected by SARS-CoV-2 due to the Delta variant. So we have to put our guards up again and do what we can do to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 until a vaccine is available for all and until more people choose to get vaccinated. One of these mitigation strategies is universal indoor masking at K through 12 schools. Masks work. The masks our children wear do not decrease their oxygen levels, nor do they increase their CO2 levels, and they are most effective when they are worn by everyone. Saying those who are concerned about COVID-19 should send their kids to school in masks, and those who aren't concerned shouldn't, is ridiculous. That's not how any of this works. To the board and Mr. Lewis. You have a difficult decision. You've tackled a lot of difficult decisions this summer, but the right decision is easy when large trusted health organizations in this country, like the CDC and AAP, have made their recommendations clear about masking in schools. If that does not inform your decision, then turn to the pediatricians and multiple other physicians in this community, including myself, who live, work, and send our kids to schools in this and in surrounding communities, and who overwhelmingly support universal masking mandates for K through 12 schools. If your child gets sick, you take them to the pediatrician. Why? Because they have the training and knowledge to care for your child and help them get better. You do not take your sick child to a non-medical professional who bases their decisions on opinions and not facts and believes in junk science. And when your kid gets really sick, you take them to Children's Hospital, to the same place where, right now, the physicians are caring for COVID-19 patients, and this month there have been more COVID-19 patients in that ICU than at any other time during this How many of you went to medical school? How many of you did a residency? How many of you have cared for a patient on a ventilator or on ECMO?
Thank you, Cara. Your time is up.
Mandate masks for our kids. Keep them safe. Do the right thing.
Mrs. Weber, do we have any more people?
I have not been made aware of any other requests to speak.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board before we move forward? Okay, I need a motion to approve the policy revision for EBEA face coverings.
So moved.
Seconded.
Mrs. Weber, can you please review the policy?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Weiss. First, I'd like to just go back and review from last meeting, the Board of Education and the authorization that they provided to the superintendent, being that the superintendent would be authorized to institute base covering requirements by building, grade level, and/or the district for staff and students as needed. After that, the board also directed the administration to finalize recommendation for a revision of policy EBEA, use of face coverings, to reflect the intent of this resolution and to develop guidelines. So as Mr. Lewis reviewed earlier this evening, we have a Healthy Aves Plan that helps us with implementation of this, which is really just a refocus from those things that we did last year and the data that we were looking at last year to make decisions. At the last meeting, we did have a first reading of a policy revision that would help us to implement this type of policy, giving the superintendent the authority to make this decision, and then look at this for both students and for our staff members as well. So we did have one more opportunity based on our board policy for a second reading and presentation for approval this evening. I will also add, Mrs. Weiss, that we are enacting Policy BF from our board policy that allows us, as opposed to having two readings and a next reading approval, to adopt a policy after a second reading. So that's what we are enacting this evening so that we can have this policy in place prior to the start of school. We did have one revision from the last reading of the policy, and that occurs, that is included in the second paragraph. I believe all of you who are here were able to pick up a copy of the policy as you walked in. It's also available on our board website. In the second paragraph, what we did add was just an additional phrase that says, "In the absence of a face covering requirement that's enacted by the superintendent, federal, state, or local authorities, students, employees, contractors, volunteers, and visitors may voluntarily wear face coverings while on school grounds or while on school-provided transportation." And we were advised by legal counsel to add that so that it was clear that this policy still could be overridden by the actions of the superintendent, which was part of the authority that you provided to him at the last meeting, or by any federal, state, or local authorities. It's included later on in the policy, but we wanted to make it clear closer to the beginning so that as people reviewed the policy, they would understand that that was also one of the important aspects of this, and that there are different levels of authority that could override the board's policy. Okay, so with that, I just would ask you if you have any questions before taking a vote for approval of the policy. Again, we had one reading. We've enacted the F policy that allows for it to be approved upon a second reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mr. Ballin?
Aye.
Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye, motion passes. At this time, we're gonna take a 10-minute break, and then Item number three, 2021, 2022 student handbooks. Mr. Lewis?
Just, you know, part of our normal process revising the handbooks, huge credit. To Mrs. Wagner and her assistant, Mrs. Jackson. They. Done a phenomenal job, you know, going through it and it is not a very fun process to go through the handbooks and. Really try to catch everything. A huge credit to our. Flight team at the district office, our administrative team. You know, all of everyone pitching in and making sure that they're ready for the school year. So. Again, just making sure that all the information is correct, people are updated. Content updated and everything is ready for the school year. So we're excited to get this off our plate and move on to the school year.
Well, I'd like to thank Mrs. Wagner, Mrs. Jackson. I did go through all of them and as I was scrolling through, I just thought, well, that's quite the job. So. Thank you so much. I need a motion for the approval of the 2021, 2022.
I have a question.
Oh.
There's several places in this where we talk about and for each building or each. Each build and we talk about discipline. For facial coverings and we state, I think it's a little contradictory. We state, for example, on page 19, students in grade 12 through K will be required to wear a district-approved masks on buses. Do we need to put anything in there about as long as federal mandated or anything like that? Because. Further down on page 31 and et cetera, et cetera, we do mention the federal mandate. So I just don't know if we need clarification there or not.
We can update that.
Okay, so. Yeah, let's, let's get a motion. Excuse me. Does anyone else on the board have any questions or comments about specific parts of the? Okay, so I'd like to, I need a motion for the approval of the 2021, 2022 student handbooks with the changes made. Per Paul Mr. Balance notation for clarifying the disciplinary part on. Wearing masks on or facial coverings on school buses.
So moved.
Yeah, second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye, motion passes. Master facility plan update, Mr. Lewis. Or Mr. Level?
I was gonna say, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Level. It's his turn to take the reins of the master facility plan update.
This is exciting and I think that Mrs. Weber is my co-leader in this. I don't know, but. Madam President, members of the board, I'm excited to be able to be here, talk about. The excitement that is happening around many of our buildings and I'm sure that. You've seen it, the construction, it's very visible. So we're gonna run through some of the updates, but I think I just want to leave because I think it's important to say. At this moment in time, we remain on time and on budget. With the work that we're doing. So we'll start out with Sims Elementary. As Mr. Lewis said earlier today, we are screaming to the front. Front doors as they open on the 30th. And so. If you drive by right now, I'll tell you, it doesn't look like they're ready to open, but I will tell you, we've been in. There's a lot of work that's happening in the remainder of these. Last few days. And so you can see some of the interior work that's happening right there. In fact, these pictures are a little bit outdated because I was in the other day. The flooring is in, the walls are painted, the ceiling's up. And they're really just going through putting some of the final touches. You can go to the next slide. We had our friends at SHP out. Did some aerial photos. I've been posting these on Twitter if you're on Twitter. But this gives a really good view of some of the progress. And in fact. You'll see the cars on the right side there. All of those cars now park over in that new paved. Bus lane and we've got pavement there in the front of the building. So it's looking even more complete. Landscaping will be a little bit after the start of the year. But I assure you, it's going to come together and we're well, we're looking forward to welcome our students back. On the 30th. I know that everybody's excited about that. All right, up next is, I believe, EH Green. You'll notice if you drive by EH Green that the walls are coming up. You're seeing a lot of masonry work. You're starting to see the building somewhat take shape. We've got some critical kind of moments that are coming in the next few months as we start to look for some steel. We're going to start to be able to get this under roof. That's the goal so that this winter. We can do a lot of the build out on the inside. Obviously, with school starting here in a short bit, we're doing everything we can do to get that front of that building of the old. I quote unquote, the old building, the building that's still there. Getting that ready to welcome families while we can continue to do construction throughout the year. You're going to be seeing some things happening in that building as well so that they can continue to work out back. And you can see some aerial photos that were taken by our friends at SHP there as well. It's great progress. Moving on to the junior high. This is the space that I think if you drive by, you see the most action and probably most notable, you're going to be seeing. A parking lot going in the front of the school. This is a temporary lot that's going to be with us for the next two years. It's going to be a staff parking lot, but it's going to give us the ability. To begin really pushing that construction more towards our transportation department. So you can kind of see the aerial photo here. Walls are going up. They keep expanding that footprint. Down towards the stadium and out towards the transportation department. That does get us a little nervous, but we're working towards that as well. Great things happening as you can see up there. At the junior high. And of course, with that property, we're also doing our best to work out traffic flows and everything for the start of this school year. Since that's such a tight piece of property there. All right, and next up. The high school. So as you know, the high school we're tackling in multiple phases. If you walk into the high school right now, you're going to see a lot of finished environments. We've got a lot of temporary classrooms set up. We're going to be moving the students this year. So work continues to happen, just like Sims. It's a lot of punchless stuff at this point, trying to get to the point where we can get students in there. Just a shout out like Mr. Lewis had mentioned earlier. Just want to give a shout out to our administrators and our teachers as we run. To that first day because there's a lot of disruption. They are itching to get into their environments. But we also want to make sure we're passing code and doing what we need to do. So you can see some pictures there, some of the common areas, some of the flooring going in. And some of those final touches. And now we're working on moving those contractors to the next phase of the building to get that work done. All right, is that good? Fantastic. Mrs. Weber, any, Mr. Lewis, you have any other updates?
I was just gonna add that hopefully you had a chance to look at the MFP budget updates. That'll be that are associated with the change orders that are going to be coming up here in just a few minutes. The projects are still on budget. We still have appropriate contingency at this point. We'll continue to monitor that throughout the process.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Level. Any questions from the board? You answered one, which was on time and under budget or on time and under budget.
That's a good one.
On budget, on budget.
Yeah, no, my only question is, are we past the soil issues for the footprints of these buildings?
Yeah, to our knowledge at this point, we have moved past that. Obviously. We are in the process of really trying to determine the next steps with the transportation department. And so as we look at properties there, we're going to have to be going through environmentals. And so I'm not going to tell you that we're clear right now of talking about environmental or soil issues, but with our current projects, we're past that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, thank you so much. Moving on, I need a motion for the approval of the change order process for the master facility plan.
So moved.
Second.
And this authorization is similar to what you did for me in that previous role so that. You know, we can continue to move forward with progress. Giving Mr. Level the authority to make decisions under 50,000. That's consistent. With the state process that, you know, he would be allowed to make decisions about purchasing. That are under 50,000 per the state kind of level before a bid would be required. So we feel like this is a consistent process and. Mr. Levels proven that he questions a lot of pricing, so. We appreciate his diligence on projects and asking critical questions of our contractors.
Any questions from the board? All right, Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye, motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the change order for Sims Elementary renovation project, GMP number three.
So moved. Seconded.
I will turn this over to Mr. Level. If he wants to talk about the upcoming change orders.
Yeah, do you want me to talk about all of them at once or?
Just as we go to each one.
As each one.
Yeah.
The Sims one right there, you'll see that's a little bit bigger ticket item, but that's really just updating some of the cabling throughout the building that needed to be done. Kind of after the fact.
All right, any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye, motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the change order for Sycamore Junior High Construction Project.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, there's nothing really outstanding. The only thing I would probably mention on here is the deduct there for 32,500 for the roofing material. Again, there's supply chain issues that we keep running into, so we're able to get. A material at a cheaper rate there. So you'll see that. And then there's just some other abatement stuff that you see down there, the higher price and the fire suppression. But other than that, they're all pretty standard.
Right, any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the change order. For the Sycamore High School renovation project, GMP number two.
So moved.
Second.
Again, nothing out in order here, out of the ordinary here. What you'll see there for the second one is the 20,987. Currently, that's a burg alarm that we have at the high school as we retrofit that for the new updated. Access controls and things like that. There wasn't a need for that system within the building.
All right, any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number nine, I need a motion for the approval of administrator salaries for the 2021, 2022 contract year.
So moved.
Second.
And this is just our typical practice. You're annually looking at our administrative salaries and recommending increases based on. Really our normal process and. You know, our administrators worked incredibly hard this past year and certainly it was a difficult year for all staff and. Certainly, the recommendations that were made were to recognize some of those administrators and also. Make some adjustments based on either benchmarking data. As you know, we look. Consistently at benchmarking data and really making sure that the compensation levels for each administrator makes sense. So. Appreciate your consideration of this item to award increases to our administration.
All right, Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye, motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the classified directors slash supervisors for the 2021, 2022 contract year.
So moved.
Second.
And I will say ditto to my previous comments for time.
Okay, Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye, motion passes. Mr. Lewis, anything else? Oh, I'm so sorry.
Say number 11.
Number 11. Let's do that one first. I need a motion for the approval of the job description for the sports information supervisor.
So moved.
Second.
And so the job description that we have provided regarding a sports information supervisor. You know, we've had a position that. A gentleman named Clark Robinson has filled for the last couple of years and. It was, it started when I started in Sycamore, it was started as, you know, it's been a clerical position in nature. What we are proposing that is the position to become a supervisory role. He really supervises a lot of. You know, handling some of the scheduling. He's actually. We've worked with him to really consolidate our building usage so that it's a better response to our community. Updating information, updating social media, updating the website, updating all the scheduling software. And it really has turned into more of a sports information supervisor. And it really has turned into more of a sports information supervisor. And Mrs. Rob, Mrs. Mr. Robinson's done a fantastic job for us. And I think as we have in the past, when we have an exemplary employee that we want to retain, you know, we look at, is the, the job that he's in the right fit? And I think this job better exemplifies what job he really does for the district, so.
This is Clark.
Clark Robinson, yes. It would give him, you know, this is just the approval of the job description. We're still working through a couple of the steps with O P C about getting an M O U in place and making sure that we make some concessions in the contract to make some adjustments to the language. Because we had some language in the contract that stated that once per calendar year that we could make a decision about a clerical position, and it was really put in about around this position. So, you know, we're willing to make a concession to make some of those changes and we'll bring that M O U forward after we get a positive vote of support from O P C on the position.
So this really changing job description then?
It's, it's essentially creating a job description and creating a new position. So if the board approves this job description at the next meeting, we would approve, we would approve Clark's resignation from his previous position. We would approve his acceptance of this position. And in that same meeting, we would also, after we have an M O U in place, because I'm not sure it'll be done by the next meeting, at a future meeting, we will dissolve that position because we'll no longer have a need for it. So the only reason we wouldn't do that with an M O U hanging out there is that it's still a position in the union and technically they have to agree that to some of the concessions. I do believe we would have the authority if we wanted to dissolve the position, but again, we wanted to work collaboratively with our O P C union and they've been amenable to, you know, releasing the position from the union. But as I talked with our legal counsel, we are permitted to create a supervisory position. And at that point, we would be able to move him into that position. And we could just leave the other position vacant. But again, at a future meeting, I think it would be prudent for this board. And also, Mrs. Weber would hold me accountable to, let's, let's dissolve the position and, and not have that position going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. That was helpful. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Mr. Comifer.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye, motion passes. Now, Mr. Lewis, anything else?
Just really quickly, you heard me mention Green one oh one being the largest group that we've ever had. I can honestly say I'm very excited. My oldest son will be there tomorrow and Friday. So I'm excited to hear how his days go and, and what he learned at Green one oh one. But I went over the past two days and the kids, the energy, they welcomed me. It was just so, it was so great to see kids again and see what energy they bring to our building. You heard me mention new teacher orientation. It was fantastic. Again, so much energy in the room, huge kudos to our administrative staff, our district office team that helped put that together. Collaboration with S E A and making sure that our teachers get what they need. And a huge kudos to Mr. Fritz and his team for getting them the technology that they need. And, you know, it's the simple things of getting logged in, knowing how to open your email. And because Mr. Level has found out email is like wildfire in this district and you got to be in it to keep up. So just huge team effort, collaborative effort. Everyone involved has done an amazing job of preparing those new teachers. But I will tell you, Dr. Davis has a critical eye for orientation and she has significant changes that she would like to make for improvement. So it goes right along with your continuous improvement mindset that Dr. Davis was like frantic the day I walked in and I want to see this done and I want to see this changed. And so again, she's, she's absorbing it all, but taking good notes and saying, okay, we're not doing this again. This is going to be better. And it's already good, but as we always talk about, we're looking to go from good to exceptional. So I trust that Dr. Davis will lead us down that path. Last couple of things, football, it's amazing, but actually the first football game is Friday. And then all of our other sports official season starts next week. So it's in full swing. It's really school and when activities are happening, it's, it's time to go. So other thing I want to put on the board's radar is just, I would love to have a discussion in a future meeting, not for tonight because it's so late. Would love to talk about the October retreat and then potentially a special retreat on a Saturday, maybe an eight to twelve on a Saturday. And really just to get our flight team together with the board and really not only grow together, but talk about some of those big things that we know we need to talk about. And as I talked about earlier tonight, getting back to focusing on teaching and learning and education and what are some of those things that have been problematic for you and some of the things that are problematic for us? And bring us all together to make that happen. So maybe looking at some kind of a facilitated retreat, don't know yet, but would love to hear board feedback. Obviously, another meeting soon, but wanted to put that in your ear.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Anything from the board for Mr. Lewis, questions? All right. All right, moving on to the treasurer's consent agenda, Mrs. Weber. Oh, actually, I'm going to ask for the motion now, so I'm a little out of sync. I think it's because it's late. I need a motion for the approval of the treasurer's consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Just a few things that point out in the treasurer's consent agenda. One, I just want to make you aware of the Serta family who has provided many donations to us as a district over the years in memory of their son Jose, who tragically passed away. Doing what he loved best, which was being in water polo and swimming. They provided a donation that you see here on the agenda that is a continuation of a scholarship that they've provided for graduating senior for a number of years. But, but I also wanted to just make you aware that the Serta family has also pledged fifty thousand dollars to the Greater Cincinnati Foundation to support with the pool renovation. So they've added on to that project and it just, it makes my heart warm to think about them continuing to support that in Jose's memory. The other items, just on, on the consent agenda, you see some appropriation increases. Those are primarily just going back through many of our non-tax bearing funds. Lot of our student activity funds and such and appropriating those funds that were left over, carried over from last year so that they can be utilized for the start of school by our student activities. And then finally, under appropriation transfers and cash advances, those are some of our beginning of the fiscal year transfers that support our summer projects and bus purchase of the capital improvement funds. Our allocation for technology, which you're seeing in action already with Chromebooks as well as some of the infrastructure improvements that we're seeing across the district. And then to kickstart our athletic programs. With that, do you have any questions about the consent agenda?
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, thank you. Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Comifer.
Aye.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio. And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye, motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the financial reports for July of twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, just a few things to point out on the financial report this time. Note that any comparison from this year to last year on our real estate revenue, it's almost doubled. Remember, that's because last year there was a thirty day delay in collections from our auditor state based on the, the county auditor based on the pandemic. If you look at where we are at this point in the fiscal year, we are about in line with our total collections through this, the second half collection for real estate taxes for calendar year twenty twenty. We've had, we received our final settlement here in August and we're right online with projections, so that's all good news. Just didn't want you to think that we were, you know, really bringing in a lot of extra tax revenue. It's really just a delay. You look at our financial picture, right about online overall with where we were last year and expenditures through July. If you look at, and the other thing on revenue, while we've talked a little bit about the state budget process and some additional dollars that will be available for the district. O D E has not yet implemented that, so we're going to continue to see, you know, probably kind of lagging collections on that that'll, that they think that we will start to see the impact of the new budget hit in probably September. One thing that is new in your report this year, or this for the, for July, is the commercial paper report. And that is something that we have not participated in before, but was recommended by our investment company that helps us manage our proceeds from our bond issue. So I went through some training. They are actually just really advising us on this, but it gives us another tool in our tool chest to try to pick up some return with the, our construction funds while we are still holding them until they're used. They, there are a few requirements with that, along with the training that I participated in. And that is, we have to get board approval of the listing that you see attached to the financial report. And then we also have to submit that to the Auditor of State's office and the Ohio Department of Education. So that's just an annual report. You'll only see that in our July, July report. Any questions?
Mrs. Weber, just one question. On the fringe benefits, you, you note that that's because of certain employee severance. You don't see that continuing throughout the year.
Those, that's for our twenty twenty-one retirees. So those staff members who retired as of June thirtieth, it's a one-time payment that we made to them within the month of retirement.
Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Comifer.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the, of the bank depository agreements.
So moved.
Second.
Every five years, we are required by state law to have approval of agreements with what we see are the, there are four financial institutions that we typically deposit our funds with either in some of our ongoing accounts for payroll, accounts payable, or potential investments such as CDs or, or different treasuries or federal securities that we purchase through them. So we're up on our five-year deadline. So ask that you approve depository agreements with the four financial institutions that are included on the agenda.
Right, any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Comifer.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the personnel consent agenda. And that includes from the addendum Personnel Items One, E G H and Three, H H I I J J and K K.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And Mr. Comifer.
Aye.
Motion passes. That's a long. All right, moving on to other Board of Education business legislative liaison report, Mr. Mercurio and Mrs. Weber.
Yeah, I'll try and be really quick. House Bill three twenty-two, this is the one regarding the teaching of certain current events, race and sex. There's no update since last time. There's recess. House Bill two forty-eight, this is the one that prohibits mandatory vaccinations, vaccination status disclosures. This one is still in the House Committee and the sixth hearing is House hearing, committee hearing is set to take place on August twenty-fourth, so that's coming up. And then one other that we're trying to track is Senate Bill two oh nine. This is the one that seeks to prohibit state or local boards of education from mandating facial coverings. The bill was introduced, if you recall, on July thirteenth and will be taken up in September.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mercurio, did you say they're taking up Senate Bill two oh nine in September?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Weber, to add on that? On facial, I mean, not the facial covering, so on the legislative liaison report, anything else?
I don't have anything to add. I know that most of these bills are just kind of stalled until legislature reconvenes later on.
Thank you. All right, moving on, Sycamore Advisory Commission update, Mr. Comifer.
Yes, and thanks. We had the executive committee and Mr. Lewis and I met last Monday, the ninth to review the ideas for the upcoming year. I thank you to, to Mr. Ballant and Mr. Mercurio for sending ideas for that. Those are still being synthesized and we are going to wait till after this meeting to regroup and to see if we had come up with a final list. So I expect that we will have that before the next meeting, before the next SAC meeting. And we'll vet that with you, what the study list will look like in advance of the next, the kickoff of the SAC group where the topics will be presented is September thirteenth. So we still have about three weeks runway before the kickoff of the committee and the resource assignments. We also have, I want to say, five at-large positions open. And so I would, if you have, you know, members in the community that you think might be good, these are at-large positions. I think, I do believe at this point, all of the, the school staff positions are filled and the P T O.
Mr. Comifer, when is the deadline to apply for those five?
You kind of, right now, we're taking applications throughout. I mean, the, the deadline would have been earlier, but when we have open slots, if we get good candidates, they are presented in front of the, the committee and then they come to a vote from the whole group, from the, as a nominating group. And then we would vote on them here in the board to, to add them. So when we have five open slots, we are encouraging those who would be good candidates. This is a good, particularly good time to apply because the assignments and the topics are coming for the year. So joining now is a good, particularly good time. A month from now would still be okay, but you'd just join onto a group. So if, if you, you know, I'm hoping maybe that with enough of the visibility of the group today, maybe that would incite, you know, or encourage some additional act. We used to have a waiting list.
Right.
Right, and that used to be the process. I think this last year, working the advisory commission remotely was difficult for, for some, and they opted out. So we now have openings, which is a rarity for the advisory commission.
Definitely a great way to get involved in the district.
Yes, absolutely. And, and you can see from tonight, the quality of the work and the research is, is super valuable. And, you know, what better way than to leverage the expertise of the, the, the families and the, in the district and the parents of the district for that, that type of research, so.
Thank you, Mr. Comifer. We will have, we'll have Sycamore Advisory Commission update on our September morning meeting as well. Thank you. All right, on to policy revision project, Mr. Comifer and Mrs. Weber.
I'll take the lead on this one. Do you recall, we've approved a, a contract with the Ohio School Boards Association who provides our policy support. And we are looking at actually trying to do a revision to, and review of our entire board policy manual. We have received kind of a set of time, timeline for that work. It'll begin actually with the first step is me submitting, now that we've approved our student handbooks. Tomorrow, I will be providing the student handbooks along with our collective bargaining agreements, our employee handbooks to our policy consultant, O S B A. Over the next several months, she will be reviewing those in line with legislative, you know, and action along with federal law, those types of things to make sure that they are integrated into our policy manual along with any other changes that might not currently be aligned with, with that law. She anticipates that she'll have a first draft of the entire manual to us. She anticipates that she'll have a first draft of the entire manual to us by the end of this calendar year. So by December 31st. But thinking through that, Mr. Commerford and I think we probably need to have a checkpoint with the board prior to the end of this calendar year. And we're thinking that potentially the October retreat, we would hope that you would have an opportunity to go through the manual or just those policies that you already know are things that you want to consider that we think we may want to revise. So we hope to have some discussion at the retreat on those things that you, as a board, have seen that you'd like to see potentially changed within the policy manual. We also do have a continuing contract with OSBA for other revisions that we may need just because things like the state budget was just approved. There are a lot of things that may impact policy. We'll continue to take care of those the next couple of months. We won't have to hold off on those until the entire policy manual is updated. In the second half of the school year, so beginning in January, Mr. Commerford and I, along with members of the district office staff, will be reviewing each one of those recommendations from the draft that we're going to receive here in the next couple of months and start to really work through those and make some recommendations to the board on which revisions we think we should accept, which we may, which revisions we may want to change a bit from the recommendations of OSBA, with the thought that we would have that work done by the end of April, hoping to get anything that might be outstanding from that work by the end of May and start that approval process beginning in June with those readings potentially done by the end of August. If we get, if we get started on the work or they get things back to us earlier, we'll try to escalate this timeline because a year seems like a long time. But considering how lengthy and involved our policy manuals, a year probably is a good time, given all the other things that we're going to be working on in this next year with strategic planning and things like that. So again, submitting information here to OSBA tomorrow so that they can get started on their first review. And probably the next step for the board would be that October check-in at our retreat to kind of just give us your ideas of those things that need to be revised. Mr. Commerford, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
You covered that extremely well, Mrs. Weber. But I maybe I would say is if there are any particular policies that you would like to have a focus on in that we're going to capture on top of what they provide to us, we would obviously welcome, you know, if there's particular concern areas that you would want us to take a look at. If, in your work, if you've seen a policy that you have some questions, we're open to include that in our, in the. We will get the things that are inconsistent, hopefully not many. But if we do get things that are inconsistent with, you know, the current laws from Ohio that we need to update our policy for, those are obviously will be the top priority that we need to address. But hopefully, we don't find any of those. But if we do, we would need to address those as the highest priority. But we would want to make sure we take a look at any policies that they flag as opportunities for us. But I would also, a third element, be any policy that any board member would want reviewed. We would take that into the process as well.
My question is, at the October retreat that you have planned, how much time are you, is that just to review these changes? Or is you're looking for this information, that's policies now?
I think we could take that input up into the October retreat. I don't think we're going to have the complete list ready by the October retreat. If I looked at the timetable correctly, if they are really ahead of schedule, we might have more definitive news to share. But I don't think, I think we'll be more talking about the process than we will the policies at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one question, kind of related. Do we have a date for the October retreat? And if not, could you just get one to us sooner rather than later?
We do not have, we do not have a date yet. We did not set that with our regular meeting. So I think we do need to get that out to you sooner rather than later. I'm not sure that we actually had, we may not have had the calendar established for this school year at January of last year. So Mrs. Wagner has that written down for us to get back to you. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballant. Well, we need to probably send out some type of poll or something about the October retreat date. All right. Anything else from any board member? Mr. Mercurio, did you shut it off or turn it on? Oh, I didn't know. I didn't know. I can't see your, okay. Mr. Lewis, anything else? Mrs. Weber? Anyone? All right. Thank you very much. It's now 10:35 almost, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.